Good evening and welcome to meeting of the Palmdale City Council for Wednesday, February 15, 2023. Madam Clerk, can you please call the meeting to order and call roll call?
Mayor Bettencourt?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Alakon?
Here.
Councilmember Bishop?
Here.
Loa?
Here.
And Olson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, before we move to an item which I think we're going to move, we're going to advance on the agenda, I believe, Madam Clerk, you have an announcement?
Good evening. Beginning with the March 1st, 2023 meeting, the ability to participate via Zoom will no longer be available. The public is welcome to attend the meeting in person to provide public comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, so I think there was a slight mishap in communication and in order to accommodate all of the beautiful folks in our audience this evening, I'm going to see if we can get a motion to advance a presentation which is in, which item is it?
9.2.
Advance 9.
I move that we advance it and have it heard at this time.
Do I have a second?
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seeing no objection, we will advance the presentation pursuant to 9.2. All right, so we have half of our presentation available. I know that we were intended to be joined by Assemblymember Juan Carillo's staff to jointly recognize all of those who were participating in Justice Sunday this evening. You will receive those certificates later. I think they will be sent over to your director and you will receive those certificates in the mail. Do we have all the actual certs? Okay. I don't know if I should just come down here. Yeah, I think, I think I'll go down, but in advance of, of the, the formal presentation of the certificates to each of, of the participants of Justice Sunday, I just want to say how remarkable it was to be able to be I just want to say how remarkable it was to be able to be present, to watch the talent and the commitment of all of the youth in the Antelope Valley who participated in Justice Sunday, gave of their personal time. From what I understand, they, they gave over the holiday their personal time to participate in practices and in writing the play and preparing the lyrics for various songs in the presentation. I want to commend the parents for their support of their children and their students and instilling in them the importance of contributing to their community in a positive way. I want to commend the leadership for Justice Sunday. Mr. Holly and Bishop Hearns, thank you so much for your longstanding leadership in the community, not just on Justice Sunday, but throughout the Antelope Valley over the past several decades. Justice Sunday initiated in two thousand, so this is the twenty-third year anniversary in celebration of what was intended to be a celebration of Martin, Dr. Martin Luther King's legacy and commitment to racial equity and justice. And I think we are all here to celebrate the, the student's commitment to that spirit. And so we, we honor you today. With that, I will come down. Do we, do we come down formally? All right. Just please. Oh. Absolutely.
I'll go these first.
Are they not all here?
They're not all here. We can pass these.
Okay, hold the kids. Okay, you know, before we do this then, I'll just go back and then I'll recognize the kids. Let's do that. Let me measure this.
You want to hold those because you know who's here and who's not?
All right, folks, program change. Because we advanced the item, not all of those who are recipients of accommodations are present. So we will recognize Mr. Nigel Holly, who will offer a few remarks and introduce a few select students to receive on behalf of all of the participating Justice Sunday students certificates.
Absolutely. Well, first off, we want to thank the, the mayor and the mayor pro tem. She came out, she enjoyed the show. We were happy to see her there. We want to thank all of City Council and our city manager, who has been supporting Justice Sunday for the last few years, as well as our teen talk program. It does take a village to, to raise these youth. And the city of Palmdale has gotten behind that movement of mentorship to change and impact young lives. This is our future that we're looking at. Our future is bright based on what these kids are doing. I won't speak too long. I'll come back up and say a few words, but I do want to allow the students to say a few words to you guys about their experience. My mentor is here, Bishop Hearns, who brought Justice Sunday to the valley twenty-three years ago. And the man whom which I stand on the shoulders of. Had an opportunity to see Eric out at one of the Justice Sunday events as well. So we just want to thank you guys. And I'll introduce a few of the students to come say a few words. And then we'll have Bishop say a few words and then we'll close out and let you guys resume business. I do want to say this. It takes an amazing city to shut down the halls of justice and the halls of, of leadership to allow students to just come out and be celebrated. So you guys should give yourself a round of applause because you had literally stopped government for these kids and that is amazing. So with that being said, I'll invite up a few students. So James, you can come.
How long can we have?
I, how many students do we have to offer remarks?
Uh, we'll just do like three, three, four. We'll keep it simple.
A couple of minutes each?
Yeah. All right, so we'll do James, Tyino, Michael, and who didn't get a chance to speak yesterday? And Skylar. We'll have all of them come up and say a few words.
Welcome. Welcome. If you could just please introduce yourself, you say your name, first name, last name and tell us about your experience.
Okay. Hi, my name's Jage, um, James Johnson. Um, I'm from Lancaster. Uh, my experience with Justice Sunday has been remarkable. And overall, like as in a general, I think that like the experience um, has been a pro in like just overall history. Because in a normal history class, you sit there and you get taught on different topics, but you don't really get the actual experience. Like you are learning and you are reading for yourself what that person went through, how they went through it, what their experiences were and the overall, like, in general of just history. But in this play, we got to, we wrote it ourselves. We did the, um, the like going through dictionaries, going through Google, trying to find different details about them, storytime, storylines, putting together poems. I think the overall fact of putting something together by hand and having our heart and our soul and then giving it out to the people and showing, um, young, older, like youth in general of what a show can be like. I feel like that's like really powerful. And I thank all of you for giving us the opportunity as students to have that experience and can be like later in years. If this ends up becoming a big production, that I did that at one point in time. I was there when it was at its lowest and I got to build it when no one could. And I could spend my weeks and my weekends and all of the time I had just doing that. And I feel like that's a really, really good experience for all students so they can express themselves. Like in a drama production, you get to feel this, but this is different. This is emotional. You're in person. You get to teach people what African Americans went through without just like telling them details and just shoving it in their face. You get to show it, sing it, and I feel like that's like, I'm really, really grateful for that. And I thank you, Mayor, and I do thank you Pastor and Nigel for, um, for this lovely experience and this is honestly unforgettable. Thank you.
Thank you. The experience was unforgettable to receive. You, you spoke it and I felt it. Thank you so much for your contributions.
No problem.
Hello, my name is Tyino Moreno. I go to Highland High School. And before I begin, I would just like to give a huge thanks to all of you and including Bishop and Nigel. All of this wouldn't be possible without you and I just, I want to make a bigger, I, I want to show you, like you guys, this means so much to all of us. Like, we won't, we won't be able to do this anywhere else. I don't see anyone else doing this. And you guys are really making a big impact on so many lives. And like, for example, I do a lot of things when it comes to the backseat unions around our district. I do state level stuff with them too. And so I know what it's like to try to promote a message and how difficult that can be. But just to see how many seats were filled at each show, it was so inspiring. And especially since you don't really see these messages being put out through our type of form, through plays and musicals. And it's such a beautiful thing. And when I heard, when I got approached by Nigel to do this, I, I'm, because I'm really into art and theater. And I was like, wait, I get to spread this positive message? Do this? Totally. And, you know, it, it really was such a fun experience with everybody. I got to meet so many people from different schools. We got to work together because even though Nigel and the rest of them were there to help us, we really all did it ourselves. We wrote our own characters. They just gave us timelines and said, you know what, search it up, make your own characters, we'll guide you through it. So it, it really was a learning experience and it was such a beautiful thing, seeing so many people come from different backgrounds, different races, everything, coming together for such this beautiful show that I hope meant a lot to a lot of people. Because it for sure meant a lot to me. And one more time, I would just like to thank Bishop and Nigel and all of you for making this possible because you guys are all truly changing lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, hello to all of you and, um, uh, my name is Michael Penizak. This is my second year doing Justice Sunday. Last year was the first time we ever did it in Palmdale and then this year was the second time we did it in Palmdale. And I would like to say that like watching the, um, Justice Sunday grow from like twelve to fifteen people last year to almost forty to forty-five-ish this year was, um, pretty big. It like really expanded a lot of what we could do from, uh, like adding more characters, having more stories, showing more of like history, as, um, they put it. And I would like to thank you for allowing us to do it here in Palmdale because, um, I know we are rooted in Lancaster and some schools are like from Palmdale. Um, and just being able to perform it here for a much wider audience, for more people to be able to go to accommodate for those who live here in Palmdale, uh, was a really good experience. And, um, I would like to thank just, uh, Bishop Hearns and Nigel Holly for allowing me and others to have this experience. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. It's an honor for the city of Palmdale to join with the city of Lancaster to honor all the students in the Antelope Valley because we are one. United, we are stronger. I believe we've got one more student? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Danny Perkins and this is my first year ever doing it. And honestly, I was a bit skeptical when Nigel first came into Lancaster and was like, so this, this awesome play is gonna be a little organized chaos. I was like, I don't know about all that. But after coming in and spending all my weeks, all the weekends, writing, thinking, uh, uh, practicing my lines, it was all worth it, performing at LPAC and at, at Palmdale here. Uh, my experience was so great, just meeting lots of other people, both black, white, e- everything. And just coming back to the theatrical part of my life again was very like nostalgic and a whole like independent and new experience for me. So, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much for your comments. We have one more, maybe?
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Bailey. I go to Sore High School. And I just want to say thank you all for showing your support and for allowing us to use the Palmdale Playhouse. This was my first year doing it and I truly learned a lot and I enjoyed doing it and I made awesome friendships and thank you again.
Thank you. You know, one of the tenants from what I learned while, while watching the show and the remarks in the aftermath was that you guys, you guys, um, you know, sort of teach public speaking. And I think your teachings have resonated and it's demonstrative by the words that were spoken tonight by the youth that you've touched. So thank you so much. You mentioned that you said, I don't know, that we stopped government. I thi- I think, uh, to the contrary, I think one of the roles of government is to elevate and uplift and celebrate those who are making positive contributions to our community and that's what we're doing tonight. So we thank you for all that you have offered. Mr. Holly, do you want to say a few more words and then maybe Bishop Hearns can join us?
Absolutely. I want to give a special, uh, thanks to Rhonda Perez. Rhonda reached out to us. She wanted to make sure that Palmdale was a part of what we're doing with Justice Sunday. She was very purposeful in that, um, and connecting and bridging, uh, our building a bridge between the two cities so that we can celebrate this as one Antelope Valley. I think that's important. I'm gonna call up Bishop Hearns now. He'll say a few words. And then if you guys don't mind, we'd like to get a picture with you guys and then we'll get out of your hair.
Absolutely. Not in our hair at all. Bishop, please bless us with some, some words.
This is our Justice Sunday alumni presentation.
Yes, I remember. Welcome, hi.
Sorry if I sound a little crazy up here. I'm like totally out of it today. Um, just, I can't say much more than these kids did. I'm so proud of them. I missed so much of this year's rehearsals from my own winter travels and they really stepped up and took on the initiative to pull off this show for another year. And I'm proud of them. And I thank all of you for letting us put it on at the Playhouse for another year and I'm excited to come back next year.
Thank you to the alumni who, you know, you, you guys sort of took a moment to reflect on the, the benefits that Justice Sunday, uh, made on your life and you pay it forward to the next generation of you. So thank you so much to the alumni as well. Bishop Hearns? Welcome.
Thank you so much. You have to put your watch on, make sure I stay in tune with the time because you guys deserve all that we can see about you. Rhonda, uh, was just so kind. She outreach, she made time for us to come and be with her in the office and she listened and, and then I, you all probably know that I was on the city council in Lancaster for eighteen years. And a part of that time I served as mayor of the city of Lancaster. And, uh, my good friend, uh, Mr. Loa, and he's worked with me on many committees and so forth. But here's what I wanted to say is this, that I recognize that you gotta get it, in, in our case at the time, and I don't know how you were set up now, but we had to at least get three people on the council to say yes, otherwise it stops. But you guys said, all of you said, yes, let's do this. And I really want you all to know that we appreciate it. And then you changed your whole thing tonight. You were supposed to be in closed session now, but you stopped and you found out if it was legal enough to, to go in and hear these kids and to hear Nigel Holly and myself bring these kids to you and you listen to them. And I want you to know I really do appreciate that. The other thing I wanted to say, uh, is that, uh, over the years, uh, coming up in April, should the Lord allow me, to reach April the twenty-third, I'll be ninety years old. And I had a point for bringing up of being ninety years old. I been a lot of places. Born and raised in Mississippi to where it was a whole lot different than when I was born, than what it is today. Where you got off the street when a white counterpart would walk the street behind you. You get off the street, all blacks did, turn your back to the street, fold your arms and you wait until you don't hear any steps and you get back on the street and walk. So it put a lot of hate in my heart. But I had an opportunity to get them all erased, where I could love anybody. And I, and I, and I, I know this is not necessarily a part of what we're talking about tonight, but I wanted you to hear this because it, uh, may help somebody. And that is this. During the Korean War was just about over. Government called me and I go to Korea and I on a boat, took thirty days to go from, from Oakland to Yokohama, Japan. First week out, I went up topside and said, anybody here want to play checkers? And get beat. And a tall, six foot six white boy stood up. And he says, I'll play you and beat you. Well, I didn't want to play with him because he was white. But I decided I better just quit and do it anyway. Twenty games later, he hadn't won a game. And when it was all over, all he wanted to do is to know who I was and to introduce me to Christ. And when he got through talking to me and reading from his scripture, somehow or the other, all the hate and the standing off the side of the streets left, and I got to the point where I could just love anyone. And that's what we want to happen in our community. That's what we want to happen on our city councils. That's what we want to happen in our workplaces where it doesn't matter whether you're white, black, brown or no color at all, that we work together. And this is what you're teaching our young people by doing what you've done tonight. You could have just as well said, no, we're gonna go on with our program just as we started. But you tenured it, no, we're gonna hear these kids. And they won't forget that and neither will Nigel and, and I. So I gave you a long sermon and everything today, but I do want you to know that I really appreciate it coming before you and thank you so very much. And I think that's what I needed to say and I need to shut up at this point and say.
No, shutting up. Thank you so much, Bishop, for your continued decades-long leadership in this community. Uh, you know, the pursuit for justice continues, but you've planted a seed, uh, throughout the Antelope Valley, but in each one of the hearts of, of the kids that have participated in Justice Sunday. So we thank you for having done that.
Thank you so much. And thank you, Nigel.
Thank you. So.
Let me just mention that this brother here is. Let me just mention that this brother here is matchless. And I don't I don't care where you look in this valley. He took on a responsibility for far less pay than what he's worth. And worked in the Antelope Valley High School. And then when when I was able to bring. Here the uh Justice Sunday, which represents what King died for. And move it from the old folks like myself to the young people. Nigel grabbed it and he has run with that and I just uh uh want. You to know that we went from AVI High School, Palmdale High School, and now we got all of the high school in the entire Antelope Valley. And the hi- the high school system. So, thank you so much.
Something that you guys may wanna know is ninety-three percent of all the students who cross the stage and perform in Justice Sunday. Go to some form of higher education. So, not only are they getting history, but they're also building their future. So that they can come back and help us build ours. And as Bishop said, we started with eight students and we had one hundred s- the on the first time we ever did this with students, it was eight students. And this year, we had over a hundred students sign up to participate. And forty-some of those students made it all the way to the end. So. These kids are amazing. So, if we can, let's take a picture.
Absolutely. Let's celebrate.
Can I say something real fast?
Mayor, absolutely. Sorry.
Hi Bishop Hearn and hi Nigel. This is Laura Bedencourt. I just wanted to thank you for all that you guys do for our community. I'm so sorry I can't be there tonight. Um but I just wanna say what a blessing you guys have been to our community and bless the kids that have done this. I think this shows how how unified our community is and I hope that we always work together to bring unity to the Antelope Valley. Thank you. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Mayor.
Okay. All right, tallest in the back, shortest in the front.
I'm not sure if any of them wanna hold. Do you want them to have any?
Oh, that's right. Oh, you can just hand it to her. All right, everybody stand by. By camera first because I know you like. Stand by. We're gonna take two pictures. Ready and three, two, one. Okay, let's take one more. Ready and three, two, one. I know there's other photographers wanna get the shot, so.
All right, I'm gonna call this meeting back to order. Congratulations again to all the participants of Justice Sunday and the leadership for the organization. All right, so we will, we've got all our members back. We will move to item three on our agenda to receive public comment on any closed session items. Do we have any? Any uh public commenters online?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Do we have any speaker cards, Madam Clerk?
No, Ma'am Proton, we do not.
Seeing no uh speakers for public comments either in person or online, we, can I hear a motion to close public comment?
I'll say.
Hearing no objection, we have closed public comment on the closed session items and we will adjourn to closed session.
Well, just for the record, um we have nine items under uh section four, four-point-one through four-point-nine. They are all correctly agendized under the Brown Act. And with that in the record, we can now adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
Good evening and welcome back to a city council meeting for the city of Palmdale for Wednesday, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We just concluded closed session. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council and public. The council considered nine items, four point one through four point nine. They were updated. They gave direction to the attorneys, but nothing that's required to be reported. No actions were taken, so there's nothing to report. Back to you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn closed session?
I'll say it.
Roll call vote. We have Mayor Bettencourt on teleph- telephonically, is that correct? Which will require us for the audience, knowledge. We have to do roll call votes to account for her vote.
Mayor Bettencourt?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Alakon?
Yes.
Councilmembers Bishop?
Yes.
Loa?
Yes.
And Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Closed session has now been adjourned. We will now open our public meeting. Agenda is for seven P M. We will begin with our pledge of allegiance and moment of silence. All please rise. Right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty of the free and of the equal.
All right, Madam Clerk, can we please call the roll for the public portion of our meeting?
Mayor Bettencourt?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Alakon?
Here.
Councilmembers Bishop?
Here.
Loa?
Here.
And Olson?
Here.
And Commissioners Fragasane?
Here.
And Denny?
Here.
Have a quorum.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. All right, so I just want to note for the record, item nine point two on our agenda, which was a presentation by our city in joint, jointly with our Assemblymember Juan Carillo, offering certificates and recognition of those who participated in Justice Sunday. We had to advance that item from our open session meeting. We had to advance that item from our open session meeting to five P M. because the kids all arrived at five with their parents, and so we wanted to offer them the presentation while they were here and not require them to to stick around for two hours while we convened our closed session. So we just want to acknowledge that we did recognize several students and their parents and all of those who who worked jointly throughout the Antelope Valley to coordinate Justice Sunday. And so we just want to commend them again. Anybody who is here to to hear that presentation, we encourage you to go back to the record and look at the online video version of that presentation. And then also item, item fourteen point one, which is a public hearing item with reference to, in some, the street vending ordinance and municipal code revisions. I believe we are looking to continue that item for thirty days to our March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. If there is, if I could get a motion, remember?
I'll make a motion to continue that thirty days.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Olson, second by Mayor Bettencourt. Madam Clerk, may we call the roll on that?
Mayor Bettencourt?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Alakon?
Yes.
Councilmembers Bishop?
Yes.
Loa?
Yes.
And Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you so much. All of those who are here for that item, we encourage you to continue to participate in the development of that ordinance moving forward. We've got thirty more days to hear back from you and work jointly with you. I will be working with our code enforcement and and many of the stakeholders in the coming days. So I look forward to hearing from you on that. All right, so that takes us back to our presentations. Item nine point one. Presentation by the city council, proclamation declaring February as Black History Month. I believe that we have a video presentation to to kick off the celebration.
This February, the city council of Palmdale recognizes Black History Month. African Americans have fought for their freedom and have made countless significant contributions to our nation. We recognize their fortitude and strive to create an environment of diversity and inclusion. In this month, we remember the men and women who have helped shaped our nation and its history. We celebrate their courage, their commitment to making America the land of freedom. We invite all Palmdale residents to join us in celebrating Black History Month. Together, we can honor the men and women who have made an impact on our nation and our way of life.
Thank you to the city team for putting that presentation together. It is an absolute honor to, on behalf of the city council, declare the month of February, two thousand and twenty-three, is National Black History Month in the city of Palmdale. We have a formal proclamation, which I will present to Mister Cedric White from the African American Chamber of Commerce. But before I do so, I'd like to read into the record one of the the key whereas is in that proclamation. Whereas this month, we celebrate the cultural heritage, the diverse contributions, and unbreakable spirit of African Americans. Through bravery, perseverance, faith, and resolve, often in the face of incredible prejudice and hardship, African Americans have enhanced and advanced every aspect of American life. We commend the heroes, pioneers, and common Americans who tirelessly fought for and firmly believed in the promise of racial equality granted by our Creator, enshrined in our Constitution, and enacted into our laws. Now, therefore, I, on behalf of the city of Palmdale, do hereby deem it an honor and a pleasure to proclaim February, two thousand and twenty-three, National Black History Month, and call upon public officials, educators, and all Americans to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. With that, if if is Mister White? Hi, how are you? Would you would you like to come and and offer some remarks before we we formally present the certificate? Welcome. Yes, sir.
I like this stuff. So I have to hold it?
Other way.
Can't you hear me now?
Other way.
Like that? Oh, you wanted me to lift it up? All right, got you.
While while you're while you're, we're getting this situated, I just want to invite, are there any other members who want to offer any remarks? Mayor, I know you're on the line. Anything you would like to add? If you can hear me?
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Can hear you.
I just want to say that this is a great opportunity for the city of Palmdale to show our inclusiveness and our love for people of all walks of life, and I am proud to help with proclamation for Black History Month, and I'm I'm looking forward to great things in the future.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Members? If not, Mister White?
All right, well, first of all, I would like to thank the city of Palmdale for partnering with the the Black Chamber of Commerce. We're so honored, and thank you for being equitable, for allowing us to be in your city and serve the citizens of Palmdale and the valley. Thank you.
It is the least that we can do. We are not allowing you to be part of the city. You are a part of the city, and we owe a debt of gratitude to all that you contribute to our community, but also our economic viability in terms of supporting black businesses and our 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 local economy. So thank you so much. I will come down. Do the members want to join me for a photo as we formally present the proclamation? Thank you. You guys can Photoshop me in. All right, so that concludes item nine point one. Moving on to item nine point three, a presentation with regard to the California High Speed Rail update presented by Margaret Sederoff, Director of Planning and Sustainability for California High Speed Rail. Welcome.
Oh, and there's two of us. There's, that one's, that was Margaret. I'm Ladonna DiCamillo. I'm going to give you an overview of what's going on at High Speed Rail. We haven't been here. We really appreciate your time this evening to to let us brief you on what's happening and and how we're working with your city staff. That's going to be Meg's part. But I thought I'd set the stage because we, it has been a while since we've we've presented to you. So when they pull the presentation up, and I'm Regional Director for Southern California, Ladonna DiCamillo, so I'm just going to run through this pretty quickly, because I know we don't have too much time and we want to focus on the meat. But I find that people haven't heard from us for a while and don't know what's going on. So I'm going to give you kind of the high level overview and the environmental process. We'll talk about Palmdale planning, station planning that we're doing, and have time for some questions and answers at the end. So we were initiated formally by the voters in in two thousand and eight with Proposition One A. There were goals set for us for our program and and what we were to accomplish. Obviously, connecting San Francisco to Los Angeles Anaheim, which is about five hundred miles. But we're also to to do that in a trip time of less than three hours. So we've always had that in mind of of how to make it attractive for riders and and make sure that we can increase rail ridership as we do that. And of course, in order to achieve the speeds that we need, it will be an all-electrified service, and we've committed to renewable electrified service. We will be at speeds of over two hundred miles per hour. We'll be creating jobs through the process, and obviously, reducing greenhouse gases is a big part of our goal. So we have a whole sustainability program built in to what we do. Today, our progress today, we have cleared, environmentally cleared or or studied four hundred and twenty-two of the five hundred mile system. So we've made really good progress on our environmental documents. We have a hundred and nineteen miles under construction, which is shown in the map with the yellow flag there in the Central Valley. And even though we're focused on completing part, something that we can operate on, we've also done some early investments in Northern and Southern California. So in Northern California, we're working with Caltrain to help electrify, which is something that we can use as we as we move into Northern California. And then in Southern California, I'm working with Metro on improvements to Union Station so that we can ready that for for the future as well. But our focus really has been on finishing construction in the Central Valley. In the process, we've created, we just hit today, ten thousand jobs. So we're very excited about that. We have an active agreement with the building trades to to employ them, and we have a training center in Silma that we target disabled veterans and at-risk adults and minorities to come into that apprenticeship training program. We also have a very aggressive small business engagement program where we're we're constantly looking to certify small businesses and find ways to engage small businesses in what we do. We're divided into three regions. Bay Area has two sections for environmental study purposes. Both have been environmentally cleared. We have a record of decision on both of those from our board. So I'm not going to spend too much time there. Central Valley, a hundred and seventy-one miles. This is Bakersfield to Merced, which is where we really want to get that initial operating segment working. And we do have several, so for environmental purposes, we divide it into sections, and then that typically gets carried forward into what we refer to as construction packages. So you'll see up here, CP four is probably going to be the first construction package done. That is the one in Central Valley, closest to Bakersfield. It's on the bottom, actually, of of this map. And we plan to have all of those construction packages completed by the end of two thousand and twenty-six, and then we're investing in the equipment to to run, and we hope to have an operating segment in place by two thousand and twenty-three. So that really is where our focus is as far as construction. I'm going to move to Southern California. It's a hundred and sixty-four miles. It's divided into four project sections. And I'm just going to take you through those project sections really quickly. This is a depiction of how we connect with other transit operators, and we'll kind of walk through that. Bakersfield to Palmdale is our first project section. In the Southern California region, that environmental document was complete in two thousand and twenty-two, and that is where the Palmdale Station was environmentally studied and and our board passed that. And then you can see on this map a potential connection to Bright Line in the green, which we're really excited about. So we are working on station planning. I'm going to let Meg talk about that. I'm just going to skip right over. Palmdale to Burbank is our second project section. We put the draft out last fall. It was out for public comment from September second to December first, and our team is going back and looking through those comments. One thing I want to point out on this section, it is through a mountainous region, so about twenty-eight miles of tunneling. But it takes that trip that probably many of you know that can be an hour or longer, and it will be a ride of about twenty minutes, nonstop ride. So we're very excited about making that connection. It's, from an engineering standpoint, one of our most challenging sections, but it's also a big game changer. So we're hoping to have that environmental document, the final, out later this year. Burbank to Los Angeles, we completed the environmental study last year, and as I mentioned, we're working with Metro on improvements to Union Station and have contributed four hundred and forty-one million to that project. And then Los Angeles to Anaheim, we have not released an environmental document yet, hoping to have that draft out next year. But that is how we then connect to Anaheim and to Disneyland. So with that, I'm going to let Meg talk more about the the station planning. We've been working with your staff.
Thanks. So I'm so pleased that Ladonna and I could be here with you all this evening, and I know you've gotten that great high level overview of the entire system, and it's, I'm the Director of Planning. So that means my team focuses on all of the stations throughout this system. And planning for us is not just hypothetical ideas, but really taking the work that's been done in the environmental documents and moving it into implementation. It also means working really closely with local jurisdictions, their Departments of Planning, their Departments of Public Works, their Departments of Transportation, and making sure that the station investment itself really catalyzes the type of development and is the game-changing sort of signature investment that something at this scale is meant to be. And I'd say it's a pleasure to be in Palmdale specifically, as you saw on Ladonna's slide, because Palmdale is where uniquely for the system, there's the opportunity to connect not just the California High Speed Rail system, but also an interstate system out to Las Vegas as well, which I think is a once-in-a-generation investment in Palmdale and really an opportunity that we're excited to work with you on. So to that end, there is a continuum of planning activities that have have gone on in Palmdale. You have a really hard-working and robust staff who've done a very high caliber of planning work detailing the structure and the tenor of what takes place in the city of Palmdale. We also respect, as I alluded to, we're bringing a major investment of infrastructure into the city and tying that into what already exists with MetroLink, L.A. Metro, and what's being planned with the Bright Line system or the system out to Las Vegas. All of that work we respect is your sort of rail infrastructure providers needs to be well-integrated. And once the Record of Decision was made, we realized we needed to keep going with planning work with the city in order to make sure that we could implement an integrated station that worked best for not just the rail operators and that great rail system, but could really catalyze the type of development that Palmdale was seeking. So we've grounded our work in the planning work that's gone on. Some of the foundational planning efforts are listed here on this slide. They're really very numerous. But I'd like to emphasize the Palmdale Transit Area Specific Plan. This is work that your team completed a few years ago, and it really did start to reshape and retool some of the land use patterns and allowable uses so that they would focus around an urban core around the station. So what we're trying to do now, and what we've been working with staff on for the past, roughly the past year, is a series of workshops. The purpose of these is genuinely focused on implementation. We want to get the system and the station right in the city of Palmdale. So we're utilizing the work of the Palmdale Transit Area Specific Plan as well as the other planning work, and then grounding that all together in a common vision and making sure we're starting to detail out the types of investments and the type of spatial layout in the station that can work best for the surrounding land uses. We did, right as we were ending the Record of Decision work, the environmental planning work for High Speed Rail, we did make an effort at a RACE grant application, the Renewing America's Infrastructure Sustainability with Sustainability and Equity. And I mean, nothing, nothing helps a project along more like funding. And so when we did that effort, we realized what was missing was still more collaboration and refinement of the precise scopes of work and the types of infrastructure projects that needed to be done. So the workshops that we've been doing over the past several months with all of our rail partners with the city and very much focused on staff work from the city has been that collaboration that helps us to guide implementation well and be most effective. So we've had some tremendously helpful input from from city staff who are who are here this evening. We'll be having another workshop tomorrow. We'll we'll be going into detail on some of what we've been hearing relative to using the station layout so that it does serve the city in terms of connectivity, making sure it isn't a barrier across east and west, but look at how we can do pedestrian connectivity in multiple locations throughout the station, use plazas and parking and transit-oriented development so that it does start to be a hub and a center of development in the city. This is a little bit of the sketch work that we've been we've been doing. I'm sure you've all been involved in planning processes. You know, there's a lot of sort of broad crowns that come to the table as you start. that come to the table as you start to further sharpen those down to much more detailed work. That's what we'll be diving into tomorrow. We'll be refining some of the station vision and master plan components so that we've got a really good scope of work to present for future funding opportunities. We all know our federal, our federal partners like to put their funding in places where they know it will be the most effective. And so the more detail we show them, the likelier it is we will be uh, successful in some future grant applications. Then we'll also be looking at governance and implementation. Um, this can be a very abstract topic, but what we found in places like Duradon, the more you understand how all of the partners can contribute their relative rights and authorities and uses to an overall partnership, you start to see how each of your relative uh, skill sets and relative powers and authorities do unlock a lot more catalytic activity for a station. So talking about governance, understanding how we'll all work together can help to further that partnership and that uh, implementation of an integrated station. So that's a summary of all of our workshop focus and uh, some of our key takeaways. We've uh, been very grateful actually for the time and effort that staff have put in. It's been, it, I know it's a, it seems easy to say, but it's crucial that what happens at this like, large infrastructure scale is well-grounded in what really works best for the city of Palmdale. So we've appreciated that the time that they've spent. We know this is a lot of work, but we respect its good work to do so that it is of most benefit to all of Palmdale. That is a high-level overview of planning implementation. And I know Ladonna and I would be very pleased to answer any questions you have writ large about the project.
Thank you so very much for your presentation. I want to commend you on meeting your ten thousand job milestone. That is, that is uh, something to be commended. These infrastructure projects have the ability to improve quality of life, but also to create uh, you know, living wage jobs and, and change, change households, change trajectories for families. So that is to be commended. I also want to thank you and thank our city team for all of the work that you have done in collaboration together. Uh, obviously, you know, the, the closer you work with our local team, the, the, the more fruitful the project will be on a local level. So thank you to all of those that have been involved uh, thus far. There's a lot more work to be done, uh, but, but so far we've, we've created a, a really strong working relationship and, and I applaud everybody involved for that. Members, do you guys have questions?
I have a question. The uh, construction of the first uh, link from Merced to Bakersfield?
Merced to Bakersfield, yes.
That's gonna be done by twenty twenty-six?
So the goal for service is twenty thirty, that timeframe. So we want to-
But you're talking about the construction?
We want to complete construction and then we do. I'm sure you've worked on rail projects. Then there's the testing and commissioning.
So my question really is, when does the construction begin for the next phase and is that phase Bakersfield to Palmdale?
So the next phase of work depends upon funding.
Okay, and how does that look?
Well, that is a good question. We're in the midst of working on some grants.
It, it's, we, we've worked on some grants. We're looking at some uh, federal opportunities that are coming up for advanced design. The next stage for Bakersfield to Palmdale, that project section would be advanced design. And we, we're, we're right now at about fifteen percent design. That allows us to really dig into the details, preserve right-of-way, start identifying what properties we need. But, but we do need funding. Uh, the state funding that we got from Prop one A, we are going to focus on the existing construction and get that operating. Uh, put the track down and get, buy the equipment, because we wanna show Californians it'll work. But if we can get some federal grants to start that advanced design, that would be the next priority for those.
Alright, so the answer is we really don't know when construction would begin for our phase?
We don't and we, we've quit trying to project it. It really just comes down to when we can get that funding. Once we have the funding at hand, we can set some dates.
We had, uh, I happened to be on the council when we first started working on this back in two thousand, two thousand, to two thousand and five. And we worked really hard to get this route through Palmdale, which we succeeded in doing, but I'm not sure too many of us are gonna actually see this done. But it seems that the one A funds were completely exhausted and now we're looking for other funding. And we haven't even completed one section yet.
We're, we're, we're working on finalizing, and the environmental process took quite a bit of time frankly. Um, yeah, it, it's, it's good to work with the community. It does slow down the process, but we are engaged with stakeholders and we wanna make sure that we get our alignment right and put it in the right place and do the best that we can in that regard.
And I think, um, I know we've both heard, heard this from our CEO, Brian Kelly. The Prop one A funds were probably about a quarter of the estimated project at that time. And so, you know, they were used in a way, you know, some of the investment went to Southern California, some went to the Caltrain quarter. Um, they were matched with our federal funds that, you know, we're really very much focused on getting a test track built here in California so that we could actually prove and put into service and commission trains that could run at speeds greater than two-twenty. So getting that done continues to be a pretty key focus for our federal funding partner as well. But there, there is still a very dedicated focus on making sure we advance the system statewide.
I heard you say that uh, Brightline is a key, uh, or something that you're very excited about, I believe were your words. Uh, what is the status of Brightline coming to Palmdale instead of down to San Bernardino County?
It, I, we, we can't speak for Brightline. They're a private sector company and they, they're going to put their business model together the, the way they- but they are doing environmental work on the Victorville to Rancho Cucamonga uh, project section. And then the High Desert Corridor, JPA is working on um, finalizing environmental work for, for that connection. And once they finish that connection, Brightline could operate it, somebody else could operate it. We, we don't, we can't see into the future, but it is still an exciting connection for the Central Valley to, to connect then into Las Vegas. It's, it's an important connection for us.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sure.
So I think it comes as no surprise to anyone that's been involved or following this project. It's been taking place over many, many, many years and, and hopefully it gets there and, you know. I know the city's, you know, we, the city of Palmdale's been very dedicated. We've been planning uh, our station for many years. And I know we've had a lot of public meetings and a lot of community input and all that and, and whatnot. And, and like we said at the last time we talked about it, um, whether it happens or not, we're still planning for it. And we still have a plan in place if and when, and hopefully it does come. Um, I'm glad to hear that you guys chose a power source, 'cause last time I heard it was unsure. So electrify is gonna be the the way to go?
Actually, and it was baked into, it's been baked into several of the funding sources that we've received.
Okay.
We can't get the speeds, we, it, yeah.
Yeah.
To get the speeds that we need to get the ridership, it really needs to be electric.
Yeah, that makes sense. Um, the uh, EIR, has that been done for the Palmdale part, Palmdale section yet?
Yes, that was in the Bakersfield to Palmdale, which was done in twenty twenty-two.
Whoever ER, EIR done, and the funding source, to speak more of that, do you guys get more from the state or the federal government? Which one are you leaning more going towards the future?
Well, right.
Who's, who's got the funds?
I don't remember the pie chart.
I've got a little bit of the pie chart. Um, you know, we, I, I think you've, you've seen maybe either in our business plan or, you know, we'll have a project update report going to the legislature in a few weeks. And um, the state of California really has been putting forward the bulk of the funding for the project so far. It's about um, fifteen percent to eighty-five percent, I think, uh, state. State eighty-five, federal fifteen. But, you know, with the passage of the Infrastructure Jobs Act, um, I think you, we see a, a large tranche of federal funding that we are very competitive for because we've completed the environmental planning work. And that, um, you know, that is definitely the focus of the program at the moment. Is it reaching out to our federal partners and using those larger grants?
Yeah, I feel like moving into the future, the, the, the federal funds are gonna be uh, more available for a project like this, 'cause I, I sit on the uh, uh, North County Transportation Coalition with some of the other members and, and we're trying to get some improvements made on the fourteen freeway. And it's really tough because the federal government, along with the state, they don't really wanna fund any road projects. They want everything to go, you know, uh, um, either the way of rail or um, bus or, you know, things, anything to get cars off the road. The funding isn't quite there as it used to be to fund road expansions, road repairs. A lot of the money uh, seems to be directed towards these types of projects. So I would imagine that, that the federal government would have more funding in, for this project moving into the future. That's just my experience sitting on that board. Does that sound about right?
And our first step was getting the environmental documents done. So that's really been our focus in Southern California since I've been with the authorities. Then it tees us up and then the planning Meg's doing with the city staff will, will tee it up for opportunities around Palmdale.
Yeah, 'cause you're not eligible for funds and you're not, you can't do anything without the, all the planning and the documents and all that done. Um, the federal government and the state too, they wanna see these projects. They call it shovel-ready um, in order to let the funding go. So yeah, it's a lot of, a lot of work just to get to that point before you even put a shovel into the ground. Uh, one, one last thing, and I know, I know Jason's probably thinking of this. When the, when the train comes through Palmdale, we've had discussions before, is it gonna go underground, level, above ground? What's, you know?
Coming at grade.
How's, how's it getting through our city? I guess that's, that's one-
Yeah, it's coming at grade into the station.
At grade?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is any of it gonna be above ground or underground?
Well, it'll be fully grade-separated, so, so that there won't be that um, tension point between um, cars and the high-speed rail system. But uh, as far as I know, the alignment is fairly solid.
It's all above ground. We, we don't go underground until, we're a couple miles south of, of the Palmdale Station.
Okay.
But it will be grade-separated, so we'll work that in.
Okay. See, that's it.
Thank you. Mayor Bentecourt, any, yeah, yeah, I'd like to say that um, i- if you haven't seen these trains, they're amazing. I know that there's been a lot of uh, stuff going on in the news lately with the derailment in Houston and the disaster in Ohio. I, I just wanna reassure the public that these are not those trains. The trains that we are talking about are high-tech, high-speed, the safest in the world. And that's the type of train that the passengers will be riding on. Uh, also, as far as the, the grade separations for these trains, uh, when it was designed to come through the city of Palmdale, they were very cautious to not bifurcate our city into two halves. So they're being very cautious of how these rails are gonna be laid. And I think one day when our children and grandchildren ride these trains from one end of the state to the other, they're gonna be amazed that uh, that this wasn't always that way. I, I think people will get, get on board, shall we say, with the project if they actually had a chance to see these trains uh, in action. I think it's gonna be a wonderful thing.
Thank you so much. I, you know, the, the linchpin in every project is, is identifying the, the funding. So we remain optimistic and wish you all the luck uh, in identifying the funding, whether it's at the state level or at the federal level. But uh, consider us a partner uh, moving forward as we have been uh, throughout the process. So thank you so much for being here and for your presentation.
Thank you for your time.
Alright folks, so I think that takes us to item nine point four, a presentation by Hope the Mission for the Palmdale Knights Inn Hotel Project Home Key Proposal. Mr. Craft?
Thank you, uh, Mayor Bentecourt, Pro-Town Mayor Alarcon, and council members?
Is the mic? I don't, for some reason I'm having difficulty hearing. Maybe if you pull it down?
Check one, two. Is that better? Check one, two?
I think so.
Okay, there we go. Thank you. And thank you for the opportunity and the privilege to come to talk to you for a moment about a potential opportunity for the city of Palmdale and for those who would certainly benefit, um, oftentimes the overlooked and the marginalized. And so what I wanna talk to you about is the Knights Inn. Uh, if you're not familiar with it, at one-thirty East Palmdale Boulevard, um, it is one hundred units. And it is right next to the incredible landmark of In-N-Out, uh, which everybody I'm sure knows. Uh, so if you've driven by it, it looks like this on the outside. On the inside, it's, it's in relatively good shape, good condition. Um, there's a nearly three acres of land that is there. You can see it. I've got it outlined uh, off of Palmdale Boulevard next to the In-N-Out and a gas station on the corner there. Uh, and so the opportunity that, that we're really seeking at this moment is a letter of support. Uh, because we're, we can't move forward with this potential with Project Home Key three point O unless we get a letter of support, because the owner of the motel um, doesn't want to, she, I guess, they went forward with another agency last year and it stalled. And they really wanna make sure that it's not gonna get stalled this time. Uh, and one of the challenges that we have is just finding hotels and motels that are willing to sell. Uh, a lot of them, they keep them very close. They're family businesses and, and this one in particular, they're willing to sell. And it could really be an incredible asset for, for the city and for the homeless and those that might be close to being homeless. And so again, our hope is just really that letter of support. You might say, well, who are you? Who is Hope the Mission? And uh, I had the privilege of starting this organization about thirteen years ago, thirteen and a half years ago. Started as Hope of the Valley Rescue Mission. We started in the San Fernando Valley. Um, we've continued to grow and to expand. Now we do have fifteen shelters, over fourteen hundred beds. Um, we, from transitional age youth to family shelters to, uh, single adult shelters. We worked with the city of Los Angeles to open the first tiny home community, then five others. We have six tiny home communities, over um, nine hundred beds and four hundred and sixty units and a lot of other different types of housing facilities. And uh, we have been up here in the Antelope Valley. Our area director is here, uh, Billy Nettles. Can you raise your hand? And uh, Melissa, um, who's one of the case managers and overseeing a lot of the projects that we're doing and a lot of outreach in both Lancaster and Palmdale. Um, but one of our, our passions is really to find a need and fill it. Where is there a need? How can we serve? How can we better the community as a whole? And so uh, we do now have um, almost, we'll be having six hundred employees uh, within the next four months. Uh, we are also renovating four hotels as part of Project Home Key two point O. Um, one in MacArthur Park, one in Woodland Hills, and two right here in the Antelope Valley. Uh, the Sands Motel, the Tropic Motel, uh, Sierra Highway, um, kind of almost in between Palmdale and Lancaster, but on the Lancaster side, that is being converted into a complex for families experiencing homelessness. Um, I, trust me when I tell you, you will not recognize it when we're done with it. Uh, it is an incredible facility. Uh, so, so again, um, you know, Hope of the Valley, we're young. Um, but I will say that uh, if you were to call any references and just look into the work that we do, um, we take it very seriously. Um, we are committed to preventing, produce, uh, preventing, reducing and eliminating poverty, hunger, and homelessness by offering immediate assistance and then long-term solutions. And so part of the long-term solutions is we know we need to bring people indoors. The longer people stay outdoors, the worse they get. They deteriorate. But when we can bring them inside, whether it's through interim housing or through permanent supportive affordable housing, then we're beginning to address some of the issues. One of the challenges that we have faced as a service provider is just the lack of mental health services. So we ended up launching our own mental health department. And we are in a position and poised now where we are going to be having mental health professionals at every one of our sites, because we know how important that is. And uh, the sites that I mentioned with Project Home Key two point O are all for families. And so we will be opening up one hundred and eighty-one units with seven hundred and twenty-four beds for families as part of two point O. But what we're really here to talk about is Project Home Key three point O. And uh, what is Home Key? The state of California Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD's Home Key Program provides funding to local public entities and their co-applicants to purchase and rehabilitate housing, including hotels, motels, vacant apartment buildings and other buildings, and convert them into interim or permanent and long-term housing for people experiencing homelessness. And so the opportunity that we have right here is that there is a particular hotel that is willing to sell here in Palmdale, and it is the Knights Inn. Um, and I have been talking to the county of Los Angeles, because the only way that we could apply for this, it has to be a joint application. It's really the county who is doing the application, and yet we would be a co-application, a co-applicant with them. Uh, there is zero guarantee that even if we do apply, that we will be accepted. Um, the funds have been dramatically reduced on this, which most are saying is gonna be the last round of Home Key funds. Um, and so in talking to the, the county, they make no guarantees. And actually, the responsibility would be on us, 'cause if you were to give us a letter of support, we're gonna be spending about fifty thousand dollars doing our due diligence. We have to do a physical needs assessment. We have to do an appraisal. We have to have our architect do the basic layout and design, how we would structure it. Okay, so, but there's two options that we're looking at, and we've been talking with your housing department. Uh, one would be is if we did it as all permanent supportive housing, one hundred units. Or the other option is that we would do a carve-out of twenty-five of those units that would be for interim housing that could be used for people that are waiting for permanent housing with their housing vouchers. It could be seniors- that could be used for people that are waiting for permanent housing with their housing vouchers. It could be seniors, it could be families. And if we did it that way, we'd have to be very careful in how we structure it to create separation um, of space. We know we can do it, I've talked to our architect already. Um, I know the HCD, um, their preference is that it would be homogeneous, but they're open to other possibilities. And so we wanna make sure we're working with the city and what works best for the city, and also what will HCD fund? Uh, because the, the asking price on this is thirteen point seven million dollars, okay? So that is a, a big investment that the state would be making into creating affordable housing here in the, the city of Palmdale, along with the county of uh, Los Angeles. I know one of the biggest concerns anytime we open up any facility, I have been on more Zoom calls and more face-to-face meetings with opposition. And the opposition usually is individuals that live nearby and people that are deeply concerned about the safety, concerned about their property values, concerned about what type of elements might be brought in, and what I've discovered time and time again, is that usually it's a narrative that's not accurate, um, but it takes on a life of its own. And so we sometimes have to kinda bring that narrative into what really does happen. And I will say that the operator of the site has a lot to do with the success of the site. And so as an operator and developer, we are committed to providing the highest level of care and safety and protection for everybody that is inside and outside. So at every one of our sites, we have twenty-four hour paid security guards. And we would do the same thing here, and that's important. Anytime someone comes in, we wanna know who's coming in, we wanna know who's coming out. And we also, for the interim housing project in particular, we check their bags, we know exactly what's coming in and what's going out. Uh, safety is of paramount importance. And we always have a single point of entry. This is important because we have to be able to see, you know, if you have multiple entries, it's very difficult to control who's coming in, who's going out. And so we have a single point of entry and we have an abundance of video surveillance inside and outside. Uh, and Mayor Potem, thank you, you came and viewed a few of the sites and you were able to see firsthand. Every line of sight, we have video surveillance, and we monitor that video surveillance. So if someone says, someone broke into my place and they stole this or that, we go, okay, then let's check the video cameras. And come to find out, no, nobody did do that, uh, I think you've, you know, you didn't clean up after yourself, whatever it may have been, but uh, we, we, we keep very uh, tight watch on what's taking place. The other thing that we do is we put in uh, the maximum amount of lighting that is allowable by the city. Uh, we want uh, no dark spots, we want, light is good. Uh, light allows us to see everything that's happening and taking place. We put in fencing. Um, and a lot of our sites, we put in, you know, fencing in such a way, uh, we put like a full ivy around it, that, you know, I, I, I guess the ivy wouldn't exactly fit in up here. Uh, but we'll put in, you know, fencing that, that fits with the community, but also creates privacy for people as well. Um, the other thing we do is we vet the residents. And we'd be working very closely with the other agencies, the lead agency, Valley Oasis, who I believe is here, and other agencies, and we're all gonna work together. It takes a team. Um, and so if we can create more inventory, one of the biggest problems that we have is the numbers of people that have housing vouchers, they're holding on to them, there's nowhere for them to go. And so this would create that opportunity. And also, the priority would always be given to somebody who has been homeless or is currently homeless in the city of Palmdale. You might say, well, how can you control that? Trust me, we do. Because in the, in the city of LA, you have city council members, some who've been very aggressive in creating housing, who wanna make sure that the housing that they created is used for those that have been homeless in their council district. So anytime outreach is done, and up here as well, when how outreach is done, we are able to document where that individual was when the outreach took place through geotags. And so it's very easy when someone comes and says, you know, they go, maybe they go to Valley Oasis, they go to another service provider, they come to us. We can look them up in what's known as the Homeless Management Information System, HMIS, and we can determine where they have been homeless. So if someone's just dropping somebody up here from another area, which we have also uh, in different places in the valley, we have to tell them they need to go back to that place of origin where they were to get the help that they need. It's not ideal, but it's the reality, okay? So we would prioritize those that are homeless here in the city of Palmdale. The other thing that we have is, we implement this in all of our, all of our sites, is a good neighbor policy. This is very important because most of our staff and our security, they're focused on what's going on, on the inside. And we need to work very closely with the community at large. If the community sees something, they have a hotline phone number that goes directly to the site, they can call us, and we can immediately deal with it. Often times what happens is, you know, something, if something goes on that shouldn't be going on, we get a phone call, we go there, it's not even our residence. You know, sometimes we will get blamed for things, uh, just guilty by association because we deal with homelessness, uh, but it's not really our residence. But nevertheless, we get involved and we wanna make sure that we're creating a win-win-win situation. A win for the community at large, a win for those that are experiencing homelessness, and then a win for the homeless service providers that we actually can be successful at what we do. You might say, how do you control what goes on? Um, at our sites, all fifteen of them, we do three wellness checks a day. Okay, now this is interim housing. What that means is three times a day, we knock on the door, they open the door, we say, we're just checking, wanna make sure you're okay, and we look inside, we make sure there's no tampering with smoke devices, okay, there's no tampering with smoke detectors and, and uh, in, in electrical, anything like that. And, and that's how we maintain the safety of that. With interim, uh, with a permanent and supportive housing, we would do what we call maintenance checks, okay? And, and there's very strict guidelines, which I have submitted, I didn't put it in the, in this packet, but I did submit it to the city in which you can see the guidelines that we do require um, for those that are part of our facilities. Uh, so again, we are committed to creating a safe environment. And as I mentioned, why do we need a letter of support now? Um, because this is going to be a very competitive process. They've already told us, HCD, it's a first-come, first-served. And they're gonna be releasing their NOFA, their Notice of Funding that's available, uh, it looks like mid-March, mid to late March. As soon as they release that, they're gonna start taking applications. And so we don't wanna wait till that point to start doing our due diligence, we want to immediately get the appraisal done, get the physical needs assessment done, and the other due diligence. But we can't do that until we get into escrow, we cannot get into escrow with the owner until we have a letter of support that the city of Pa- Palmdale says, you know, w- w- we believe in this, we know this is important, we wanna get behind this, even though we may not have all of the answers yet, um, as far as what HCD will and will not fund, but we do know that now is the time for us to act. Um, and so, and then to me, the benefit to the city of Palmdale is you're increasing your housing inventory for the unhoused and the very poor. Um, HCD and the county are gonna provide the funds to purchase the motel. Uh, HCD and the county will provide funds to renovate the site as well, because there's uh, fifteen percent of the rooms have to be ADA compliant, um, hearing and physically as well, so a lot of times the bathrooms don't have the six-foot radius, so they have to knock out the, we have to knock out the walls and create that. And also, on the PSH side, we would make sure that there's fire sprinklers and that there's kitchenettes in every one of the units as well. And so, and if we were to come up with this, the idea that we've talked about of carving out twenty-five percent for the interim housing, we would make sure regardless that we would stub in the electrical, okay, the, the water, and so that, let's just say in five years, it's like, you know, we don't even need the interim housing anymore. We've been able to solve that problem, but we do need low-income affordable housing. Over a weekend, we can come and just put in the kitchenettes because we've stubbed everything in. So we make sure we do that on the front end of it. Um, and then those that are unhoused, uh, Palmdale residents, uh, with vouchers, w- will have an affordable and appropriate place to live. Um, and then, you know, Hope the Mission, uh, we would be, we are already, uh, because we operate out of the city of Palmdale. Um, up here with our area director, as I mentioned with Billy, and we would continue to be a great partner with the city of Palmdale in working not only with you as a city agency, but with all the other um, incredible service providers here in the Antelope Valley to make sure that we're addressing um, the needs of those who have the greatest need oftentimes, and those that um, are homeless and those that are trying to get back on their feet. So that is, I think, my presentation, um, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
You guys will be providing the city with the highest lever of support?
Is that a misspell? A- a- actually, in the, in the Health and Human Services, sometimes you just pull a lever and things happen, okay?
I was just checking.
I wish there was a lever, you know, if there was a magical lever, we could pull to make these.
If it was only that easy.
Almost worked.
Levers, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Craft, for your presentation and for your lifelong commitment to um, to helping the least among us. You mentioned that you, you, sort of your, your overarching uh, principle, guiding principle, you find a need and you fill it. Um, we have a need here in the city of Palmdale, at last count. Um, there is a slightly over three hundred identified uh, unhoused in our city. With a hundred units, uh, your project could potentially address one-third of that, uh, of that issue uh, and house, you know, uh, over a hundred, a hundred folks, uh, depending if we get the twenty-five interim versus the seventy-five. Um, so I think this is an incredible opportunity. I think at, at the outset, the, like you said, there is no guarantee uh, for the funding to be approved by HCD. Um, and I don't see any reason for us at the application stage to cycle y- you know, the opportunity for you to be awarded uh, the, the funding source. I'd be happy to support, but I do wanna just personally attest to, I did get the opportunity to go visit several of, of your facilities. And, and I can attest to all that was in the presentation in terms of security and lighting, the professionalism of the staff, uh, and, and sort of the, the overall well, sense of well-being that you get um, wh- when you interface uh, with the residents that you serve. You are to be commended for the work that you've done in, in your fifteen facilities. Uh, so based on my observ-, my personal observation of your facilities and your proven track record, from what I understand, uh, in, 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 in all those fifteen facilities, all of the funding sources, you have never been cited or held in default by any of those uh, governmental agencies. Uh, that having experience in the housing industry, that is, is, is something to be uh, acknowledged. Uh, so I know we've had several discussions on, on the unhoused recently here at this dais and in these chambers. Um, and, and our priority is to really address the local need. Thank you for your verbal commitment to prioritize i- in terms of your vetting process, those that have identified uh, and a long-established history of, of being unhoused in our city. Uh, clearly, those are, those are the folks we wanna be able to, to uh, serve first. Uh, so with that, I, I'm more than happy, I, this is, it's just a point of order, I don't know, this is a presentation on our agenda. Um, the, the request is that we um, we authorize a letter of support. Could we entertain a motion?
Well, certainly. Um, in fact, you, you, I maybe overstep, but put to you, uh, Mr. Craft. Do you have a, a model letter or something that another agency has provided? If you could provide that, uh, city manager, her staff and that can work with the council to put together an even better one. So what your direction would be is to work with uh, Mr. Craft and Mission, uh, Hope the Mission. Bring back to you, I mean, you've got time for two weeks from now, right?
I think there is an urgent need, the, the NOFA is said to be released, right?
Well, then you can direct city manager, myself, and, and we can keep the council informed. Especially if you have, I'll, I'll say, a template, uh, if you.
Have submitted already.
Yeah.
Even better.
So i- i- thank you for that. It's, it's my inclination, members, the, uh, to support this project and, and to, to introduce the motion. Um, uh, to, to sign onto a letter of support for their application uh, for, in, in, for their application in conjunction with the county of Los Angeles to the state uh, for these funding uh, sources, but I, I leave it, I would, before I introduce that motion, I leave it open for council discussion members.
I have a question.
Councilman Valo.
Good afternoon, sir. Good evening. Um, I was reading today about the Cecil Hotel in downtown LA. You familiar with that?
Yes.
So that's a six-hundred-unit hotel in downtown LA that spent, I guess, the developers or the city, the county, whoever, spent one hundred million dollars refurbishing, and yet it remains one-third filled, the two-thirds are unfilled. And part of the resistance on the part of unhoused people uh, are the room checks, the requirements of moving in and out of there, uh, and the fact that uh, many of those units don't have showers and bathrooms. Uh, I'm pleased to hear that you're going to uh, have kitchenettes in each of the units, and I'm assuming they're all hotel rooms and they all have showers. Um, in the hotels that you now have, or the operations that you presently have, what is the vacancy rate in your other areas of operation?
Yeah, we're at ninety-eight percent occupancy.
Okay. No problem with the homeless or the unhoused uh, resisting uh, going to these facilities?
Initially, when it was new, they were skeptical, especially like with the tiny homes, like, cuz uh, you know, what is this? And but once they were able to move in and see it, and these don't even have bathrooms in them, the tiny homes. Uh, they have to walk to an exterior, it's very nice, uh, the bathrooms, but they have to walk to them. And uh, there, what we have found is just incredible gratitude to be able to come in out of the elements, to not be in the cold, not be in the heat, um, and to have electricity, to have a toilet, a shower, and, and to have three meals a day, and those kinds of things that really, you know, when people are on the streets, and I, last year, I personally lived one hundred hours unsheltered on the street. I wanted to personally see what it was like. And uh, my takeaway, when it was all said and done, is it would be nearly impossible to stay sober, sane and safe living on the streets. And we've gotta bring people indoors, and when we do, people move from survival mode to possibility mode. And so, and I, I'm, I am familiar, I've read the same articles, and, and sometimes there's, they, certain elements put so many restrictions that make it difficult to get people in. And we haven't found that to be the case. We have our own outreach workers as well, and so we are going out and we're talking to people and building relationships and bringing them indoors, but we, as a provider, have not had any trouble. And that goes for congregant and non-congregant site. What I mean by that is like the uh, Skate Land, okay, we purchased that and now it's called the Trebek Center, named after Alex Trebek. One hundred and seven units, but it's congregant, so it's all under one roof and everybody has their own cubicle space. We're a hundred percent capacity, okay, all our tiny homes, okay, basically a hundred percent capacity. And that's because we do the outreach, we bring them in, we do treat people with dignity and respect, but we also require something of them. It is not a free-for-all. And, and a- as an agency, um, you'll find even within agencies, there's different philosophies, uh, you know? But for our philosophy is, you know, we believe that, that when you, if you expect nothing, you're probably gonna get nothing. But if you expect something and encourage the best out of people, they rise to that challenge. And our goal is not to warehouse people. Our how, our goal is to help people go from the streets to a place of stability, to a place of hope and actually rebuilding their lives.
So how do they go in from that process of being on the street? Do they have to apply for a voucher or how, how, how do they actually?
They meet with one of our case managers, and our case ma-, or, or another agency's case manager, well, no. Once they're in our care, they work with our case managers. And the first thing we do is documents, uh, essential documents. Do you have your birth certificate? Do you have your social security card? Do you have any ID? No, 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 it's all stolen. We immediately get that, because you're never gonna get into permanent housing, you're never gonna get into uh, the work, back into the workforce or qualify for SSI, SSDI unless you have those documents, so we get that. And then we design a personal case plan for every person. Because everyone's different, and what are the underlying issues that led to someone's homelessness? And what are those underlying issues that are preventing them from getting a job, preventing them from being housed? But for s- some, it might be mental health issues, so we're gonna deal with that. Substance use, we're gonna deal with that. Maybe domestic violence, okay, and, and so someone's fleeing, we're gonna deal with that. And we're gonna find out, i- i- maybe job skill training, so we have a very robust job training and job placement program. Because we know that people need to work. Uh, we're opening up a one-hundred-unit facility in Woodland Hills and it, and as part of HCD, uh, um, Home Key, and it came with a Denny's restaurant that was boarded up. Alright, so what are we gonna do with that? I said, you know what we're gonna do? We're gonna put a daycare right there. Because we have one hundred mostly moms and kids living in this facility, they need to be working, let's make sure we're taking care of their kids. And so I went out to the public community and I was able to raise three point seven million dollars to, cuz we didn't get money from HCD to pay for that. I had to privately raise that, and we're gonna be opening up an incredible daycare facility for these parents, so the moms, so they could be working, saving their money, and then moving out into permanent housing.
So an applicant for your program here in Palmdale uh, wouldn't be dependent on a voucher or anything like that?
Yes, they would, they would. We would have to have some funding mechanism. Okay, and those funding mechanisms usually come in the form of vouchers. And so we work with, you know, LASSA, and LASSA works with elite agencies, and then with agencies like ours and say, hey, you know, we've got X number of vouchers available, so then we immediately are trying to qualify who, who's the best fit for these vouchers. And then as a permanent supportive agency, we would accept those vouchers. If it's interim housing, th- those don't operate with vouchers, that's gonna operate with either funding through a contract with the city or a contract with, through LASSA, that they would fund that.
Alright, thank you. Um, so part of the problem with the vouchers and, and that Cecil Hotel example is the bureaucracy, which
Is the bureaucracy, which is grinding very slowly apparently, and that's part of the problem with not being able to fill that facility. This is a a much smaller one, I understand, a smaller scale, may not have those same kind of issues, but just overall raising that concern. The thirteen point one million, uh, is that the appraised value of the hotel?
I haven't had it appraised yet.
That's what they're asking, thirteen point one?
Yes.
So it's gonna be dependent on appraisal, I suppose.
Yes, exactly. And let me just iterate, reiterate, we have on staff twenty-two housing navigators. Their full-time job is s- making sure that those who qualify for the vouchers, that they get them within our care. And then finding where can we place them. Their biggest problem, there's no place to place them. So we have people oftentimes that have, it's a time-limited voucher, and it expires because there's no place for people to go. And and that's so frustrating when someone's willing, they're ready, and so we all agree that permanent and supportive and affordable housing is the ultimate answer. But the streets can't be the waiting room for permanent housing. I say, any anymore than if I had, you know, hypothermia, you wouldn't say, can wait in the snow until the doctor can see you. You're gonna bring me indoors. And so that's what this is all about, is bringing people indoors and then the offering the rehabilitation services, the help that they need. The support that they need to get them back on their feet.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, are these applicants drug-tested?
Um, it depends which group you're talking about. No, we are not drug-testing, and here's the thing. And we can't, like, say through the state, okay, but we work very closely with them, that if someone is. Uh, an example, you cannot bring drugs, alcohol or weapons into any of our facilities. But that's not to say that somebody may not use elsewhere and then come inside, okay, that does happen. As long as they're not a threat to themselves or to anybody else, they're okay to be there. If in any way that they become a threat to themselves or to somebody else, then we have to put them on an improvement plan, and if they can't follow that plan, then ultimately we may have to say, you know what? You're just not a good fit. The goal is to get people back to a place of health. So I tell people this, I'm more concerned with progress than I am perfection, and I also ask this question. If we were to go to the neighborhood that you live in, okay, and we were to say, and make an announcement. Anybody within your five-hundred-house um neighborhood who's ever gotten high this last year. Or who's ever gotten drunk this last year, you need to immediately vacate your home and go live on the streets. What would happen? And the problem is sometimes we we expect this incredibly high standard for people that have been traumatized again and again. And and yet yet one that we don't always live up to, so I'm looking at people saying, we're gonna help you. And we're gonna give you the, all the resources you need to succeed. If ultimately you have no intention of bettering yourself, you're not gonna be a good fit for the program.
Okay, I ask because it's it's, I know it's a, it's a program to help people improve their lives, but I'm also concerned about. All the houses and apartments and businesses surrounding that area that um comes into concern. Um, I'm, I, uh, I'm interested in what you talked about with the carve-out, with only doing the twenty-five units, and you brought up senior housing. Which I think is very important because we have a huge lack of senior and retirement housing in Palmdale. Uh, which i- if this project were to go through, I think, I think there could be a possibility for that. Um, I do believe a hundred units, all used um for the type of housing you're talking about. Would be difficult to manage manage and problematic at all hundred units, especially when we have a need for housing for seniors and. And retired, you know.
Seniors would qualify, okay, so absolutely, and and that's where we would wanna work with the city and say, what's the greatest need? Then let's prioritize seniors, and we can do that, we can prioritize seniors, we can prioritize, you know, certain subsets of the population. Um, so, you know, you bring up a good point, yeah, and we can do that.
And I think, you know, not only would that be good for us as a city, because there's a lot of people uh living out here in a two-story house. That they don't need that, they don't need that large house and that they can move into a a facility like the one you're talking about. And that opens up that house for a family of four or five, um, and it has a bigger effect, so to speak. Um, I I like the idea of what you're talking about doing to that property, I know that property is an older. Uh, building and it needs a, needs a little T L C and renovation, so it'd be nice to see.
Yeah.
Uh, that that area get gentrified, but I think it's important how we go about this. And uh what type of housing uh we place there and what the priority is.
Thank you, Councilmember Olson.
I guess I have a statement more than a question, and it's to that theme, cause it's been mentioned several times tonight. What element will be, we be attracting, and so my statement is, well, what kind of element do we already attract? Without twenty-four-hour onsite security, single point of entry, video surveillance, lighting, fencing, vetting of residents. The m- regular room uh checks. Uh, so, uh, I appreciate your presentation tonight, I think that you helped ease some of those concerns. And I just wanted to to get that out there, cause I know that that's something we're gonna continue to hear, and I think you provided those answers.
And if I may, we work very closely with the local police departments, and also we set up um. These groups outside of each of the sites where we will get on phone calls, starting with monthly, then every other month. And and we wanna hear from the community so we can be proactive, and we also invite local law enforcement to be on those calls as well. And we're able to measure and monitor, has crime gone up or has crime gone down? And so I'm proud to say, we were, we've been able to actually monitor crime going down. Um, it's amazing when you can actually give people the basic resources that they need to live, that they're, then they're not out stealing. And they're not, I mean, when you can he- address the underlying issues, there's, there's a wellness and a health that begins to set in. That helps people rehabilitate themselves.
I I just have one follow-up, very quickly.
Sure, Mayor Betancourt, are you still there? In the case she is.
I'm still here.
Okay, I, I'm gonna uh go to Councilmember Lowell, but in the case that you have comments, I just wanna make sure you're still there.
Is the restaurant facility that's been closed now for several years part of the, part of the purchase?
It is, and I'm already, my brain, you know, if this was to work out, you know, again, I really wanna work with the city, cause I, I wanna create something that we're all proud of. That we can all stand behind and say, you know what, yeah, we're addressing this issue. And so depending on exactly what population, you know, or sub-population goes in there, you know, to be, we offer life skill classes. You know, we had offered, invite the community to come in, music classes, art classes, anger management. You know, money management, uh, and dealing with all kinds of things and bringing the community to be part of the solution. So yes, I've walked that site, that's a big area, because you have the, the, on the left-hand side when you go in, where people would check in, there's a. Um, people live onsite, I think it's a three-bedroom, kind of a three-bedroom house back there, that could be used a lot for case management. But then on the other side, uh, it, the the opportunities are are quite encouraging of what we could put onsite there.
The old restaurant's part of the project?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yep.
You could use the uh Denny's concept, right?
That's right, that's exactly right, yes.
Mayor Betancourt?
I just wanna thank him for coming um and speaking, I just wanted to make sure, you, you, Andrea, you and I have already heard the presentation. But I wanted to make sure that the rest of council also heard this presentation, so I appreciate you coming. Um, I do wanna make sure that we do reach out to the businesses that surround this location and try to get some input from them also. So if that hasn't been done, if we could facilitate that happening, that would be great. Um, but thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, Mayor, any additional comments? Uh, look, I, based on everything I've seen, everything I've heard, I don't know that we could ask for a better service provider. I think this, the the opportunities are are incredible here in order for us to be able to provide much-needed services. To uh to our at-risk folks uh in the city of Palmdale. So I would uh be happy to introduce a motion to authorize our city manager. To draft and pre- prepare for signature a letter of support to the Hope of the Mission uh proposal. Uh, there's no guarantee that you got the money yet, but we wanna, we wanna think optimistically and ideally you'll be awarded, so. That's my motion, it, I would, I would, is is there a second?
I'll make a second to that.
Thank you, Councilmember Lowell, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion by the members?
Is everybody clear on staff, what what's included here, okay?
All right, seeing no further discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Mayor Betancourt?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Alakon?
Yes.
Councilmembers Bishop?
Yes.
Loa?
Yes.
And Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, congratulations, good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
We look forward to working with you. All right, that concludes our presentations, uh, I believe that takes us to item number ten. Uh, waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances.
Move to uh for full waiver of, full reading of resolutions and ordinances.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Loa, second by Councilmember Olson, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Mayor Betancourt?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Alakon, yes. Councilmembers Bishop?
Yes.
Loa?
Yes.
And Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, that takes us to item number eleven, public comments on consent calendar items only. Again, this portion of the public comment is relevant to items on our consent calendar. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker cards on consent items?
Yes, we do, Mayor Pro Tim, we have Jason Zink, who would like to speak on items twelve and thirteen point two. Both consent calendar items.
Mister Zink?
Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes.
Uh, the clerk does have a statement to read.
Can I, can I just make a, a quick announcement?
Of course.
Good evening, everyone, um, beginning with the March first, twenty twenty-three meeting, the ability to participate via Zoom will no longer be available. The public is welcome to attend the meeting in person to provide public comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mister Zink.
Okay, sure. I'm not sure, I was gonna make a point of order, but to do a motion, I think you can direct staff, but I don't think you can make a a motion without a public comment. Uh, open, opening it up to the public. I'm not sure, is that true or not?
I don't know that we need to engage at this point, but you, we can let, allow him to three minutes, we don't want.
No, no, I, I.
And we'll respond after.
Okay, but I I'll just make my comments about it. I'm worried about, you know, senior citizens are the biggest homeless population, that's what's coming. Uh, and putting seniors with all these other people is not good because they get abused, they get assaulted and other, other things like that. So we wanna uh put that question in there. There's also several veterans who died in our valley, out there in the desert, who froze to death. Wanna put that out there. We have a ho- higher homeless count than Skid Row of L A in Antelope Valley, I wanna put that out there in your mind. Uh, we need to do more for seniors. Uh, I wanna call uh thirteen point two, which is about Yellen Park. I'm very supportive of Yellen Park construction. Eric, I I I'm just as enthusiastic about it uh happening for your district as anybody. But my problem is, I don't see any state grant tied to this project or any other big grant. Why are we using all our city funds on these projects when there's so much money out there available, you know? This district, most of the people are people of color, this should be an easy one. Juan Carrillo's district, he's our state assemblyman, right? I, you know, he's up there in Sacramento, you telling me that he can't bring something back for his district? I just think that this is an easy one to get money from the state, I think it's like a no-brainer. I mean, Kerry Smith and Eric, they could fly up there to Sacramento, meet with the park department, and on my Palmento Park and other projects. And on uh, but five million dollars, instead of trying to get it from the state, I think that's kinda. We haven't worked the system like we should. I mean, Austin Bishop, Loa, wouldn't you love five million dollars for your district? Alakon? Eric, five million for more for your guys' dish, you know what I'm saying? We, I I don't, I'm not saying to stop the project, let's go ahead and do the groundwork and all that stuff. But let's go up there to the state, say we're short five million dollars and try to get that. And uh, I'm sure Juan can do that, right? He should, it's his, it's right a mile from his house, you'd think he'd wanna do that, so he looks good, right, as our state assemblyman. So I'm asking you, uh, I don't know how you're gonna do it or what you gotta do. But I do not want five million dollars of A V funds going towards this project, cause when we can get it from the state. Uh, you know, it takes time to build these parks, so why can't we just, like I said, start it, but keep on requesting the grant somehow? That five million dollars would pay for all the land around Palmdale Lake, would pay to buy Una Lake, and would uh uh help with Palmento Park construction. That's it.
Thank you for your comments, Madam Clerk, any additional speakers?
Not for consent calendar.
Do we have any uh speakers online?
None at this time.
Thank you for that, uh, with that, we will close public comment on consent calendar items. Uh, so I'm gonna take them separately, the the Housing Authority Consent Calendar and our um council consent calendar. So, uh, can I hear a mo- motion for, to approve the Housing Authority Consent Calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing the motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Mayor Betancourt?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Alakon?
Yes.
Councilmembers Bishop?
Yes.
Loa?
Yes.
And Olson?
Yes.
And Commissioners Spagessane?
Yes.
And Denny?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you for that, given that our Housing Authority uh agenda has concluded. I'm also gonna entertain a motion to adjourn our Housing Authority meeting.
So moved.
I'll second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Mayor Betancourt? Mayor Pro Tim Alakon?
Yes.
Councilmembers Bishop?
Yes.
Loa?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Commissioners Spagessane?
Yes.
And Denny?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you so much, our Housing Authority meeting is adjourned, thank you so much for your participation this evening. Uh, moving to our consent calendar, uh, members, do, are there any items that um we're requesting be pulled?
Yeah, I'm gonna request thirteen point two.
Thirteen point one?
Those were the two that I had as well, any others, members? Mayor Betancourt?
I'm good.
I make a motion to approve the remaining items.
One second, I didn't hear, Mayor Betancourt, I think you got cut off, were you?
She said she was good.
Oh, you were good, okay, got it, so thirteen-one and thirteen-point-two will pull from the consent counter.
And I'll make a motion to approve the remainder, second.
Motion and a second, uh, Madam Clerk, please call.
Mayor Betancourt?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Alakon?
Yes.
Councilmembers Bishop?
Yes.
Loa?
Yes.
And Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, that takes us to thirteen point one, the adoption of resolution number C C twenty twenty-three dash zero thirteen. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale, adopting a fee schedule for the Palmdale Film Stage. Welcome, may we hear a staff report. This is an exciting one.
Okay, can you hear me?
Okay. I can hear you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Would you like me to um just kinda go give you an overview of?
Yeah, if you could just do a, a just, a, a general um staff report with an overview of the project and what we're looking forward to do here and what the resolution provides.
Absolutely. So tonight, we're looking to set the fee uh schedule for the Palmdale Film Stage, which will be opening soon. Um, in order to further develop our film-friendly reputation, create more jobs and bring additional filming opportunities to Palmdale. Uh, City Council approved uh the capital improvement project to refurbish a city-owned building. Uh, located at three eight four four eight Sierra Highway. So, um, this Palmdale Film Film Stage is approximately six thousand square feet. And will provide a C Y C wall and green screen, and it will be intended to make it available for rental. Um, also, the Palmdale Film Stage is the first location in the Antelope Valley to offer this type of production amenity. So it will be owned and operated by the City of Palmdale, and our rental fees were determined by researching. Over ten comparable film stages in L A County. Um, we also received input from our city liaison, our film liaison, excuse me, David Habler. And the Antelope Valley Film Office Liaison, Pauline East. Uh, the Palmdale Film Stage will also uh feature a kitchen, a furnished screen room, dressing room. Uh, makeup room with two lighted makeup mirrors, uh, two restrooms. And the uh amenities kind of allow for an inviting and flexible location for all uh filming and photo shoot needs. So, um, in the staff report, we've laid out uh the fees. Um, we do have a minimum uh four hour for the rental. And one of the things that our facility is going to offer, that some of the other facilities that we researched. Did not offer was the student discount at almost, you know, fifty percent reduction. Um, the um budget for this is based on just the last three months of this fiscal year. And we anticipate that as the Palmdale Film Stage is um fully operational. We can see the revenue for the, for the stage grow. And that, that's a basic overview for you, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer that.
Thank you so much for that staff report, Councilmember Bishop?
I pulled it, you know, for a few reasons. I, I just wanted to, to thank the staff and the council for their support on this project. I think this is gonna be very beneficial for the city and the residents in attracting a business as large as the studio and film business here, uh, like it's never been here before. They come out here to film a lot of locations, they're here for a day or so, they pack up and go, but this is gonna be the first, like you said, building that actually offers them an indoor setting where they can set up and film for, for days, if not weeks, uh, for a production, and, and that's really gonna help bring a lot of jobs and a lot of tax revenue to our city. Um, I don't think, is David Halver, David Halver here tonight? He's not here?
He's not here tonight.
Okay, I didn't, yeah, I didn't see him out there. But I wanted to thank him as well, I know he's been, uh, working hard on this, uh, with you guys, along with Pauline?
Yes.
And whatnot, um. I did, uh, I did have a question as far as the fees go. I was wondering if the fees that we generate from the rentals, um, where are those going? Is that getting back into the general fund, or is it going into a separate, separate fund?
Um, I believe the way we're setting that up with, working with Chanel, uh, the finance director, is to put a separate revenue account, uh, in the general fund to collect those fees.
Okay.
And then that way, we have, can, you know, offset our expenses with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I was hoping, and, and not at this meeting, but I'm sure at some point in time, we can, uh, talk about this, setting aside a, a certain percentage of those fees generated to keep reinvesting into this venture, especially if it proves to be beneficial for the city and the residents to do what we can to, uh, drive a huge anchor studio here, like an ABC, a Netflix, a Universal, a Fox, that's, it's all in hopes of driving a huge studio here to build their own sound stages, uh, to bring thousands of jobs. Um, so I'm hoping that we can set aside some of the revenue that's, that's generated from this to help keep putting into doing what we can to, to drive those businesses here and to keep reinvesting into, uh, ourselves, so to speak.
Um, definitely, and I, I feel like this is just kind of one of the first steps.
Right.
Um, in our, our bigger plan to attract that, uh, additional filming here to Palmdale and create those jobs and, uh, additional opportunities.
Yeah, no, that'd be great, and, uh, we have the, uh, ribbon cutting tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, what time?
Uh, three thirty.
That's right. All right, that's it for me.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Loa?
Yes, thank you, uh. So what I wanna do is thank Mr. Bishop for his, um, dedicated, uh, effort for a long period of time to make this possible, and, uh, I just wanna thank you and recognize that you have achieved something really important. And, uh, thank the staff too, for putting it all together. I think this is gonna be great for the city and the first of many more to come. So thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your support.
I echo the congratulations and thanks, uh, to Councilmember Bishop for his leadership in moving, advancing the Palmdale Film Stage to get us to this point. There's a lot more that can be done and will be done, and I know he's gonna, uh, lead the charge again. Is there, uh, Mayor Bettencourt, did you have any remarks on that?
Yeah, I just wanna say yay, Austin! Thank you so much for bringing us to our city, and thank you, Micah, and to, to every, and all the staff for working so hard on this. This is a, a great thing for Palmdale, and it's only gonna get bigger and bigger and better and better, so thank you, everybody, and thank you, Austin. Without your, your vision of, of this happening, it would have never occurred.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Olson?
No, I just the same, thank you, uh, Councilmember Bishop, I know you worked really hard on this, and it's really, I really think that this is the first step for something great for our city. I shared the fee schedule with some of my industry friends, and they said, you know, you could probably raise those rates, and I think that the point is, we want to be very attractive to that industry, and I think this is just the first step, and there's a lot more that we can do, and I'm excited to see the full potential in this. So congratulations to staff, and again, to Councilmember Bishop.
Thanks, Council, and, uh, yeah, those rates are very competitive, and it should, it should, uh, be uh, very easy for the production companies to see that and wanna start moving some of their productions up here, if it's, even if it's the second or third unit. And, uh, maybe even some of Eric's contacts can come up here and do a comedy show.
Thank you to the entire team for getting this to this stage. I'm gonna leave this to Councilmember Bishop, can you, you wanna introduce the motion on this?
I will make the motion.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion by Councilmember Bishop, second by Councilmember Loa, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Mayor Bettencourt?
Absolutely, yes.
Mayor Protim Alakon?
Yes.
Councilmembers Bishop?
Yes.
Loa?
Yes.
And Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations. All right, folks, that takes us to item thirteen point two, award construction agreement with R.C. Becker and Son for PN seven nine five, seven nine five at Samuel and Park Phase Two project in the amount of seventeen million, five hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-two cents. Thank you so much for being here, Director Glidden.
Hi, um, at first, I think I'm gonna do is just kinda go through the, the recommendation that staff is making to kinda give a little bit of background on it. So we are recommending a, an award to R.C. Becker and, and seventeen point five million dollars. Um, we're asking for appropriation of five million dollars for Measure AV funds. And in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, the first part of Samuel and Park, the first twelve acres was built. It was funded partially with drainage funds, part development fees, and we did get a grant, about a one point eight, two million dollar grant from the state for that first phase of it. We subsequently started to design for our second phase, and, um, we, we did community, we outreach meetings, things online for our staff to be able to look for, because we knew we needed to try to go find more grant funds. Um, during that timeline, we did apply for grants. We applied for five different grants from the time of twenty, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one. Um, part of those grants, two of them were actually trying to provide enhancements to the first phase, additional landscaping, additional, uh, play, fitness, coin. We were both denied on those, and, um, and then in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, we applied for three, three more grants for Phase Two, and we were denied on those. One of the comments that we did get in our last grant of twenty twenty-one was that the park site decreased in points being offered as the median poverty levels and incomes became higher in that area versus where they were in twenty nineteen. The application decreased in strength. So we have real- tried really hard, staff, our Parks and Rec staff have tried really hard to go out and try to find additional funding, and we have just been denied. And so that is why we need to use our own city funding for this project. Um, and the project as it's laid out today includes, um, eleven, yeah, eleven foot salt courts, passive play area, um, a restroom, a community building, along with another restroom behind it, um, increased lighting, pathway lighting, parking lot, increased enhancements in the, in the first phase. So we are putting some additional landscaping in the first phase to kinda pump that one up. And, um, we went through design, we went through the whole community outreach in this, we saw that the community we're looking for, passive play areas, fitness stations, pathways, those type of projects. And after the design, we did go out to bid, so then we went out to bid. It was submitted out on our Planet Mid site to about five hundred and thirty vendors, and twenty of those were probably prime contractors, our general A contractors that would be doing the work. We received three bids, so that was even kinda shocking for me for this type of work. We called ten of those, um, eighteen bids left that were remaining, and asked, why didn't you bid on this project? Basically, one said that they did not want to bid on projects that had a CWA, which we have a CWA within the city. And then the other said that they just had too much work to do, and they, or they could not bond it because they had other work in the, in coming forward. So those are, are, we, we ended up with two bids. One of them was R.C. Becker and Son, who is out of Santa Clarita. They are a, a well-known contractor in the Antelope Valley, they actually built, uh, Phase One for us, so they're very familiar with the site. Um, as part of that bid, we had a couple deductive alternates to help, see if we could help the budget a little bit. One of the deductive alternates was to remove eight musco lightings, which would be around the footsall courts, that's like number sixteen area right there. And it's just the musco light poles themselves, these are the eighty-foot tall poles that are only for sports field lighting that would be lit when those fields are used. Um, all the infrastructure, the conduit would be installed, no wire pole or anything, but for future phasing of putting the poles in. The second alternative was to actually remove four of the eleven footsall fields, those would be the last four on the south side. And basically, we would just then put in the place of a passive play area in the time being. We could also look into maybe a pickleball court, but initially, just passive play, if we can, we can go back out for grants, which we will always continue to do, to see if we can get additional money, and maybe we can do other amenities in that area. Um, so still, after reviewing everything, our recommendation is still to re, uh, to award this to R.C. Becker, uh, approve the five million dollars additional money that we're getting from, at, from Measure AV. And, um, once approved, we will start work, um, as soon as the contracts are done and some metals are approved, and it will be about eighteen months from the time notice to proceed that the project will be done.
Thank you so much for that presentation. One, well, two quick questions, you said, um, uh, that the five million dollars would, it, notes here, I just wanna be clear, it was already budgeted, it's already accounted for.
So we already, no, we already, we already had a five million dollar of Measure AV initially. The, the budget that we had available was about sixteen point, um, I got it in here. Sixteen point something million, nine point five of that is park development fees. We had originally five million dollar budget of AV, Measure AV, that was budgeted the previous year, and Measure A, which is about one point five million dollars. We are asking for an additional five million dollars of Measure AV, so a total of ten million dollars of Measure AV.
I understand, okay, so, and then to Mr. Zink's point, you, um, indicated you applied to, for five grants.
Yes.
And did I hear you correctly, that we were denied?
On all five.
Because, on all five, because our local economy in that area did better?
Um, so in the first two grants, we, we applied in twenty nineteen for a, a Prop sixty-eight. I don't have the reasoning why, that was like for two point one for enhancements on the original park site. I don't have the reasoning back there, but we can get that information, 'cause we've been debriefing on all these. We did a Prop sixty-eight in twenty nineteen for Phase Two. We asked for about eight and a half million at that time, it, we weren't awarded. Um, when we did get a debrief on Prop sixty-eight, um, we reapplied for that a grant again in twenty twenty-one, that is when we were told that the area poverty level had increased a little, or decreased a little bit, so then our points of getting the grant decreased, and we weren't, the, the project was not strong anymore.
Understood. Councilmember Loa?
Yeah, thank you. And so we've already, um, provided five million previously, and now we're, you're asking for an additional five million for Me- Measure AV, and that's coming out of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget now? Okay, and there's, the, the numbers are still strong as they had been in the past year, in terms of the AV, uh, tax.
Yes, we're, we're trending over twenty million per year.
All right, and, um, so, uh, were there other explanations given for the denial of the grants that you applied for? Other than the fact that the economy or the demographics there economically had improved?
So I do have one, another one that we, um, had applied for a Phase One park enhancement. This was a twenty twenty-one National Park Service Outdoor Recreational Grant. Um, this one, they were looking for new parks, so we were looking to enhance our old park. Um, they felt equally important as underserved area elements, didn't feel that the poverty level was as high as the competition. And then also, this project is, didn't substantiate the underserved community.
Counsel, if I may, um, I, I have a few years in parks, and, uh, Kerry will likely be able to echo the same information. Prop sixty-eight is extr- extremely competitive, and also Measure, I always say Measure A. Measure A, I always try to say Measure M. Measure A is also, um, there's a, a local allocation, and then there's also, uh, an application, competitive application process. And I actually sat on the steering committee for those two grants, uh, when they were created and when that funding source went on the ballot. And believe it or not, Lancaster and Palmdale were found to be at a lesser need for parks, because we've actually done a really good job of developing parks in our communities. When you look at a park capita down in Los Angeles, they are in a much higher need for recreational and open space than we are here in our two cities, and so that often can weigh in on the, on whether or not we receive the grant funds as well.
Okay, and I, I, there's no question that, uh, this park needs to be developed. I mean, first of all, I think it was, this property came to the city from Mr. Yellen twenty years ago?
Two thousand and one.
Something like that, and, uh, the need in this particular area of the city is, is extremely required, I mean, really, we need to act on this, so I understand the, uh, concerns about Measure AV and the way we spend the money, but I think this fits exactly how it should be spent, and so I'm hoping this passes.
And I would like to say, this did get brought, brought to the Measure AV Board, and they consented, I, I guess, whatever, they supported, they supported.
Concur.
They concur.
Yeah, I saw that, I jumped in for them.
Councilmember Bishop?
Um, yeah, no, I mean, some time ago, the council decided to move forward with completing more of the parks. Um, that was a dedication that, uh, that we felt that was important. It started with Rancho Vista Park, which we just finished not that long ago. Um, it ran a little more expensive than we thought it would, much like all these projects do. I won't lie, when I saw the seventeen million dollar price tag, I was, I had sticker shock, I was a little taken back by it, 'cause when we originally talked about completing these parks, I didn't, I didn't know it'd possibly go, go that high, it would go that expensive in price, but like Mr. Loa said, you know, the, the property was gifted to the city, and, you know, we've been sitting on it for twenty years, and it's something that does need to be finished, but, uh, but yeah, that's expensive.
Like everything else, it's going on.
But, but you know what, you guys, if, if we delay it, it's only gonna get more and more expensive, so we, we really do need to move forward on it.
Mayor Bettencourt, any additional comments? If not, I'm gonna ask, uh, Councilmember Olson to offer final remarks, this is in his district, and I think it's a near, an i- item near and dear to his heart. Mayor, you good?
Yep, I'm good.
Councilmember Olson?
Um, just for one last point of clarity, I think you've already, uh, answered this question, but if we approve this here tonight, that does not exclude us from continuing to try to get more grant money to offset these costs.
Correct.
Correct, okay. And in the spirit of giving credit where credit is due, I just wanna thank staff and Assemblymember Creo, who I know has worked very hard over the past few years to get this done. So, thank you, staff, thank you, Assemblymember, and with that, I would like to make the motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, motion on the floor by Councilmember Olson, second by Councilmember Loa, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Mayor Protim, Mayor Bettencourt?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Alakon?
Yes.
Councilmembers Bishop?
Yes.
Loa?
Yes.
And Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, as, um, indicated earlier, uh, item fourteen point one will be continued, uh, thirty days to our meeting scheduled for March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, which then takes us to I, our, uh, new business, item fifteen point one, discussion in possible direction regarding a possible partnership with the City of Santa Monica regarding housing opportunities. Um, Madam City Manager, if you could just give us sort of a brief overview on what we're even contemplating here? I think, I think that, that would benefit the entire council.
Sure, absolutely, there is, uh, an opportunity with the City of Santa Monica, who has approached us with, uh, some consideration for, um, development in the City of Palmdale, some housing, uh, related to supporting their RENA, uh, numbers that they would have to, um, that they would have to build out in the City of Santa Monica. Uh, there is an opportunity here, um, I guess the best way to say it is, they are land poor, um, and we are land rich, and, uh, there is an opportunity here to just have a discussion, uh, but before we get too far down the path, I wanted to make sure to bring this before council, uh, for your consideration, um, to consider, uh, a tr- potential transfer of some housing units from the City of Santa Monica to the City of Palmdale for development.
In exchange for?
In exchange for, uh, to be determined sum of money, support, development, infra- Infrastructure, investment, whatever that looks like. We very much in the infancy stages of this conversation. Um, but wanted to get direction from council as to a go forward path.
Yeah, so I, I just read an article by the mayor of Santa Monica that said that. They're desperate to build housing in their city in order to house their homeless. And that the only solution to address their homeless situation is for them to build housing within their city. So I certainly wouldn't want to steal that opportunity from them. So um, I am wholeheartedly one hundred percent against this. And I would probably fight this with every breath in my body.
Okay, we, we don't want you to lose all of your breath, uh Mayor Ben Court. Uh, so from what I understand, this is just. A discussion at this point. There's no formal proposal on the table. It's just to entertain the conversation.
I wanna know, I, I, I'm, I'm very angry over this. I wanna know why Santa Monica picked Palmdale. Why not Lancaster or somewhere in Silmar or the county area of all the cities, eighty eight cities in Los Angeles County? Why Palmdale?
Quite frankly, I, I was uh advised prior to this meeting that if the city of Palmdale doesn't jump on this opportunity to benefit from.
This is not an opportunity.
Santa Monica's uh, uh surplus, a budgetary surplus to Lancaster will. Uh, so, so uh, uh, look, so uh, I think at this stage, it's, it's just a. Allowing our city manager to have the conversation, to see what's on the table. If it's a terrible proposal, you know, obviously she, she, she will not have authority to en- enter into a contract or, or.
So, so the, for the public that's listening, in order for Santa Monica to, to build this housing in their city, it's gonna cost them a billion dollars. And I had heard, although no one from Santa Monica has reached out to me personally as the mayor of the city. That's why I'm wondering how this happened without the mayor even being notified. Um, they're offering us a hundred million dollars for them to put housing units in the city of Palmdale. Um, but that, with, with that hundred million, that doesn't build the housing they're talking about. They're not talking about paying a hundred percent. Of the housing that they want to get rid of. Um, and then we endure an eternity of traffic, congestion. Air quality issues, lack of jobs and more people on the fourteen freeway. It lies in the face of what we're trying to do to improve our community. And I'm, I would really like to know. Who from Santa Monica brought it to the city of Palmdale and who in Palmdale they've been talking to? Cause this was kind of dumped on me and I would really like to know how this happened.
So to my knowledge, there are no numbers on the table. So I don't, you, you mentioned a hundred million dollar figure and, and, and other numbers. I don't know that we've gone down that far of a, of this path. Uh, city manager, are we? Is there any formal proposal on the table with our numbers?
There is not at this time. The only information I have is that they have a Rena number. Uh, requiring them to build six thousand units and they are interested in a potential transfer of some portion of those units.
And all, all that's being considered here is just to allow you to have the conversation with the city of Santa Monica, correct?
That is correct.
And who are we talking to with this, in the city of Santa Monica? Give me a name.
Council member law?
So um. As I understand it, uh, what are the mechanics exactly what the proposal is?
I think that's the problem. We don't have to push down. I don't have a lot of information on this. I did not want to get too far down the path with having a conversation with them before. You can see the challenges even bringing it up tonight, um, before we got too far down the path of, of exploratory conversation.
Bottom line is the proposal to build housing in Palmdale to bring uh unhoused people from Santa Monica to Palmdale.
I don't believe it would be for unhoused. I believe that we would have to. It would be our goal. I, I don't want to speak on behalf of council, but I believe it would be our goal that this would be workforce housing. That this would be a path to homeownership, um, that there would be quite a few stipulations around this to make sure that it's a good product. Um. I, 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 I don't have enough information at this point. It was just an, an initial conversation. Um, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna, I, from what I understood, I, I don't think, I, to answer your question for, I don't think it's. Like Santa Monica residents being housed here. And I think, is that the question you were asking?
Essentially that one, but it, so this is more of a transfer of Rena requirements. To fulfill Santa Monica's Rena requirements by building in, in, in Palmdale. And that is allowed under uh.
This would require legislation to allow it.
Okay, so it's just a transfer of, of responsibilities in, in terms of how many units. Now, would we get credit? For our Rena units if we were to do this?
It would all depend on how the legislation is crafted.
The legislation's already been passed or where are we with that legislation?
We have not initiated any legislation. I believe uh, our Assemblymember would be interested in um authoring or it. Carrying some legislation to this effect. Like I said, it's, it's very, very much in its infancy. The goal tonight was to understand if council even has an appetite for this before we even engage in conversation.
Well, I have the appetite for it. It addresses Palmdale Rena numbers.
Council member Bishop?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to know the answer to Mayor Ben Court's questions. I'm, I'm too very skeptical. But I have an appetite to find out who, what and why. I'd like to, I'd like to at least know.
I don't like backdoor deals. Let me just say that publicly. I do not like backdoor deals.
Yeah, I guess.
Council member Olson?
Yeah, I guess I'd say um. If it's the way that the mayor describes, I would be against that. But if it's the other way that we're. Coming up with uh workforce housing, we're addressing our Rena numbers. I do understand that Palmdale has a lot of space and we are in desperate need of development, but we don't necessarily have the money to do that. And there's Santa Monica that has no space to develop and a lot of money that they can't do anything with. So I would be curious to see what the potential is if they're gonna give us hundreds of millions of dollars to improve our infrastructure. Build workforce housing with a pathway to homeownership. That's something I would be interested in hearing.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
So I, I, again, I don't know all the details of what's on the table, but I think it's, it's a conversation worth having. Um, and uh, once the city manager um entertains that conversation with the city of Santa Monica, whoever their designee is, whether it's a. Member of their council, their mayor or their city manager. Um, if, you know, obviously bring that back to, to the council for consideration in, in more detail. But at this juncture, I don't know that it hurts anybody just to have the conversation to see what's, what's being offered, what's being contemplated. Uh, so.
So we're looking to authorize the city manager to have those discussions? Is that what's on the table?
To engage in the conversation and negotiations to identify what proposal is on the table.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to do such as stated.
Without a sec, I'll, I'll second that.
I have a further question. Um, so the direction is to you, uh, Ms. Perez. To fill in a lot more data and bring back a report. That's the extent of it.
Just exploratory at this point.
Right, okay.
Is the, is what I'm hearing.
Right, so no actual substantive discussions with the city of Santa Monica that would lead to some kind of contractual obligation?
No, that would have to ha- cut before council. I don't have that authority.
Yeah, I mean, during my brief, it was kind of explained to me that they're in a desperate need. So if they're gonna come up with lots of money, let's hear it.
Well, I've heard those kind of lots of money proposals before, so.
Yeah, and, and, and let's be honest, if, if we do it for Santa Monica, shouldn't we do it for everyone else too? I mean, why would we break, you know? Why would we break a tradition of, of keeping, you know, our own projects? And say, yes, Santa Monica, you can build in our city, just, you know, give us a dollar or two. And then what, what happens when the other cities want to do the same thing in Palmdale? Why should other cities be able to dump their Rena numbers in our jurisdiction when we struggle to do our own housing?
Well, I guess that's part of the information you're going to get. You, you know, you can tell that there's some skepticism.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think getting some more information is something I'd be interested in as well.
Alright, council, seeing no further discussion, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Mayor Ben Court?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Alakon?
Yes.
Council members Bishop?
Yes.
Loa?
Yes.
And Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you so much. Please, uh, city manager, as you can tell, we, we're all interested to hear back on that, uh, on that item.
Alright, folks, that takes us to item sixteen, public comments on non-agenda items. Uh, do we have any speaker cards on non-agenda items, Madam Clerk? Yes, we do. We have Jason Zink. Mr. Zink? Welcome back.
Uh, Jason Zink. Uh, again, you guys just did a motion without opening it up to the public, which I believe is a violation. And you never said anything, so I'm probably right. Uh, I guess I'll just sell, since the city of Palmdale doesn't want my land, I guess I'll just sell it to Santa Monica. So I guess coming here for thirty years is finally paying off. That's great. Uh, we celebrated the, uh, recognizing Black History Month for Palmdale and Justice Sunday. But yet we do not have a, a park named after Martin Luther King. And I've asked for that for over ten years. To change Desert Sands Park to Martin Luther King. Uh, seniors, I want free internet and free basic cable for our senior citizens over here in the three senior apartments. They are living, they pay their rent and they're living on peanut butter and jelly sandwiches and looking at walls. And I don't think that's right. I think the city can pay for it. They get uh six million dollars from Spectrum and franchise fees. Let measure A V, general funds, give them their golden years, let them be connected to the world. Uh, I want to talk about uh Amargoso Re- Groundwater Recharge Project, right? Water's rushing into the ocean right now. But yet here we spent ten million dollars on Amargosa Groundwater Recharge Project and the ponds sit dry. Does that make any sense to you? Uh, there's a lot of stuff. It's just crazy, the mismanagement. Uh, money balls. Measure J, right? It's a hundred million dollar county fund, which will balloon to nine hundred million. So our share, per capita share of a hundred million, there's ten million people in L A County, would be ten dollars, right? So ten dollars times a hundred and seventy thousand people in Palmdale is one point seven million. That would be our share if we didn't have to do grants and stuff like that. But our fair share would be more because we have more foster care. We have more of a need. So, and then other areas in L A County. So we're not getting our fair share. Why can't we sit down and look at these strategically? You're telling me, Juan, all that power he has now, the Democrats backing him, he couldn't get money for Yellen Park? Forty-five thousand people and there's only one park in that district, in your district. That, that's, that thing was all screwed up about this, saying there's too many parks in A V. Cause they used the schools and uh, and now those calculations. So she's wrong, not saying nothing bad about you, but. We keep getting the short end of the stick. It's because we don't have a strategy. We're mismanaged. From the groundwater recharging to, from all these funds, we are better than this. I, I, I wanna help you guys out, you know, but I don't know. It's up to you.
Thank you for your comments. Madam Clerk, any additional speakers? Uh, yes, it says on behalf of Roger and Lindsay. They did not give their name. It just says on behalf. Is this? Hi, welcome.
Good evening, uh, mayor and const- council. I'm a little nervous and how do I explain six months passed in three minutes or two forty-nine now? I have been trying and asking for code enforcement fines that are twenty-eight thousand dollars. And nine hundred and something for um. Reductions in those fines for this man, Roger Lindsay. He is a sixty-nine-year-old senior citizen, retired veteran from the air force. Um, that has mental illness. And a lot of things happened to his property, which is three houses down from my dad's property. And um, there was a lot of homelessness. Um, people took over his house. He was arrested due to his mental illness and um. From late twenty nineteen to September twenty twenty-two. Um, people just destroyed his house until my dad, I'm, I'm a real estate broker here in the Alamo Valley and my dad asked me to help him. See, he says, see what you can do to help this man. Anyways, for the past six months, I've been trying to ask. Um, Madam City Manager and Code Enforcement for fine reductions. His sister that lives in, in Hawaii, and just because you hear Hawaii doesn't mean that she's wealthy and full of money. Um, she sent ten thousand dollars to the city of Palmdale just last week. And um, I send emails, I call, I show up physically and without naming any names. Code enforcement's back is turned on me and they blame it on legal. But yet city hires legal and city directs legal. And I don't understand why it's so difficult to get some help for this man. He doesn't have eighteen thousand dollars to send to the city. He doesn't. I just got him a. Uh, a statement in the mail and it's right here on my phone and I was gonna send it to you guys. But um, it's from M R S, which is an ambulatory service for him. Six thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars. That I have to like pay for him to get his life back together. I'm power of attorney over him. Now, because his sister lives in Hawaii. Excuse me, and I just, I'm asking for a resolution. It's been six months. I'm tired of this, aren't you guys? I don't know who to go to because these people don't give me answers.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Zink, you're more than welcome to engage separately, but your, your time is, your time has expired. It is, it is a, a, a practice. That has been adopted by this council and all other councils not to engage uh with public commenters. Correct. Madam Clerk, next speaker? We have no other speakers. Any speakers online?
None at this time.
Mr. Alvarez?
Good evening, everybody. I'll honor our new mayor's practice of not performing in the paper and uh, so I respect that. Um. Three hundred is the number you stated, last count on homeless. I work for Los Angeles County Department of Social Services. One of the things I do is help place temporary homeless. And the past practices, if they're homeless, you get fourteen days and a deal of sixteen and that's it. Once you've done that, there's no longer any means of additional homeless. However, they do have a one-time permanent housing and then there's a lot of red tape that prevents them from qualifying. Uh, the gentleman that was here earlier presented a powerful, positive uh PowerPoint. On the potential purchasing of the hotel and what this program brings. And in working for the county for thirty years, I can tell you that the program, uh, and I will shed some light on this. Um. I used to be a home call worker, so I go to, to homes and determine if they need assistance or not. And one of the common things that they say and explain why they're in that position, why they don't have housing, why they don't have a job. Is that number one, they were laid off. Number two, it was drugged and, and so on, so on, et cetera, uh, mental health. But the current program that this gentleman brings today, and I thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Lewis, uh, the Cecil Hotel. I did read over the last few years that they're having a hard time filling it. One-third capacity and I get the difference, six hundred versus a potential one in each hotel that this gentleman presented today. And uh, I will tell you this, after speaking to homeless people time and time again, and I speak to them almost every day. Is that they say they have too many rules and regulations. So I encourage to find out detail by detail what the rules and regulations are. Should someone have a voucher to potentially stay and these hotel keys. Captain Barger will tell us how the real data fits. That in Lancaster, they were having problems filling those hotels as well. So I'm concerned in finding out if we move forward with this, if this council moves forward with this. Uh, what are the numbers and how will it help reduce that three hundred count? When the actual homeless people, most of the people I talked to that attempted there, that they, excuse me, that they kick them out because they. That they kick them out because they have too many rules and regulations. So I'm curious to see what we can do in partnership with that to see if we can move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. Any additional speakers? Mr. Blanco?
Good evening, Mayor Protem. Good evening, Ms. Mayor. Councilmembers. So I I got a lot of windshield time right now and just recently on KNX, they had an article, a news story. About Huntington Beach, uh not providing or not living up to or not. Uh having their housing needs met in that state of California. Is about to take them to court to sue them. So maybe Santa Monica is trying to head that off by utilizing us. I don't know. But in any event, I would like to be in that loop if at all possible about this information. Since uh the assembly was brought up. I may. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Blanco. Any additional speakers in the audience? Going once, going twice, seeing none. I will uh move to close public comments on non-agenda items. So I have a second?
My second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Ben Court?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Alakon? Yes. Councilmembers Bishop?
Yes.
Loa?
Yes.
And Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Alright, public comment on non-agenda items is now closed. That takes us to our city manager's report. Ms. Perez?
Yes, just a couple of things tonight. I I'm excited um as we sit here and have this meeting this evening. As we welcome in the film stage and we approve the uh the contract for development of another park. I think we're moving in a beautiful direction in our community. A couple of the items of note. The spay and neuter, the low-cost spay and neuter program that was approved by council with this fiscal year. And is sponsored by Measure AV Dollars, just serviced its seven-hundredth animal in seven months. So it is going to make a rapid difference. A lot of those animals are actually feral cats. And so um just talking to Carrie German this morning, she said the average cat can have, I didn't know this, fifteen cats in a year. And I imagine if half of those had fifteen more and fifth, so um if we are actually working on this pet population. Um it's it's bound to have an impact. So very excited. Along those lines, we will also be partnering with the clinic, uh I'm sorry, with um. Karma Rescue on two twenty-six to provide a vaccine clinic and ten dollar microchips at Saves. And then we'll also be partnering with the county on two additional dates this year uh to do something similar in in other locations throughout the city. Our season of service is coming up here in the next couple of months, so stay tuned for additional information on that. As we mentioned, uh March is going to be Women's History Month and we will have a women's symposium here in the city of Palmdale. And uh other than that, I I'm sure there's a million other things that I missed. But we are actually making quite the dent in the graffiti and illegal dumping. Topic, those are always going to be hot topics. Uh it's fascinating how much we are picking up in tonnage. Bruce, am I going to put you on the on the spot? I want to say it was uh almost two thousand tons in the month of January. Yes, alone of illegal dumping. So um the the team is working very hard. And I hope everybody is feeling the fruits of their effort yesterday or today, actually. Uh uh no, Tuesday. My my days are all messed up. Uh we had our staff members go out once again and work on graffiti tags throughout the city. Uh we are well over a thousand that our team, our city staff team has cleaned up here in just a couple of months by engaging them and putting them out in the community. So um a big shout out to the staff and their commitment. So thank you.
Oh, city manager, I was going to make a comment. You call? I I want to make a clarification for the record. Um on February second or on or about February second or so, there was an announcement of a settlement with our previous city manager. For two point two-three million dollars. On December twenty-ninth, uh twenty twenty-two, there was a closed session that brought that matter up. And on a vote of two to one, and I'm speaking for myself, by the way. Um in that closed session and a vote of two to one. Uh in favor of making an offer to Mr. Murphy to settle that matter. Uh that was accepted by Mr. Murphy and his attorney. And uh the the record I want to make here is that I voted no on that. So the vote was two to one. Uh in addition, it's been reported uh that I had asked the city manager. Uh to fire uh and an individual that was working for the city. And I deny that. In addition, uh there was an accusation that I had demanded. Uh in some form to have the city manager. Basically do a favor for a contributor on a project that was that according to the accusation, I was trying to pass through. Despite rejection by the city engineer. And I categorically deny that that is accurate. Um the basis for my vote on the two to one was basically advice by legal counsel. Uh in what I consider to be good legal basis for denying the um settlement. Uh but that's my statement.
Thank you. Uh councilmember Bishop, your light is on. Did you have any additional comments? No? If not, uh Mayor Ben Court, I just want, do you have any final comments?
Oh, no, I'm good. Thank you.
I just wanted to circle back and uh commend and congratulate uh Palmdale Public Works for all the hard work you're doing. Uh and accomplishing in cleaning up our city and to the entire city family, all of those who are working to to clean up the graffiti. On a consistent basis. Thank you for your efforts. Um I there are two um commissions who were applications uh that were receiving. The planning commission and the human rights commission for any of those members of the public who are interested in applying. To either of those commissions, I encourage you to visit our website for more information, www.cityofpalmdale.org. That's it for me. Any additional comments? Matters? Madam Clerk, have we covered everything? Alright, that takes us to item number eighteen, our adjournments. I'm going to ask that our city manager um close us out with an adjournment. For somebody that the loss of somebody that she has established. Uh a very solid working relationship with Dr. Bill Mathis.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh yes, we unfortunately lost a a member of our um. Our larger Palmdale team in Dr. Mathis. Um he was a consultant that we hired here at the city in the last year to help us work on our culture. And provide uh an opportunity for the council to come together on team building and goal setting and also be working with our staff. Uh he's been working with our staff for the last year. He is a founding member of the League of California Cities. He was very involved in CCMF. He worked with various water boards, cities um and uh. Uh various districts throughout the state of California, over a hundred of them in his forty-year career. So uh he passed away unfortunately last Tuesday and uh we will miss, I will miss him quite a bit. And uh the impact that he was destined to have on our organization, but we will move forward in his honor. Thank you.
Condolences on behalf of the city of Palmdale to the Mathis family. In the name of Dr. William Bill Mathis, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.